Council chambers, we're gonna roll right downhill. The proposed regular agenda scheduled for the 20th, we have oath of office. Oath of office for top non-incumbent as a city council member for four-year term expiring not until January 1st, 2022.
Sounds like a long time to us.
It's a long time. And then we have some mayor's awards, Anna MacGyver Award as well. Number four, we have a public hearing for consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of College Street right-of-way located between Valley Street and Market Street, Burlington, Iowa. It's gonna be the first reading on that one. Mr. Tisland?
As part of the sale of the Apollo Building, it stated that the city would work with the purchaser on vacating College Street, which is a north-south drive between the school building and the parking lot, not really used as a street but remained a public right-of-way. So this is the process of going forward with vacating College Street as a right-of-way and selling that to the current owner of the Apollo School site. It's to go through review, there's no utilities or any issues with it. The planning commission did have a meeting on October 24th and voted five to zero to recommend approval of vacating of the right-of-way based on the ownership on both sides by the applicant, lack of utilities, and lack of use by the city as a through-street. So this'll connect up and be all one parcel when it would be completed.
Anything else on that?
I don't have any.
What's the progress over there?
He's purchased, or my understanding is purchased some windows and gotten stuff lined up for the roof, but haven't seen any construction progress to date.
Did we have a timeline that he's supposed to be working on?
I think he has to give some updates. We, it was later when we actually got the deed to him, so it was closer, I think in October was when we were supposed to get some update, and at that point he just stated he had just ordered some roofing material and windows, so I'll try and get another update from him.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we wanna keep him encouraged. Anything else?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, moving right along. Number five, next is a consideration of West Avenue, Mason Road, urban renewal area, and plan.
Mr. Cahill's to speak on this as well, I'm just gonna go over a few things. That's what this covers, a map as well. So the plan is in the packet as well, but some of the parts of that, Iowa Code Chapter 403 authorizes cities and counties to establish areas where within their boundaries known as urban renewal areas to exercise special powers within these areas. They can set up economic development. Urban renewal area, that may be any area of a city or county which has been designated by the city council or board as an area that is appropriate for commercial, industrial, and/or residential housing enterprises and in which the city or county seeks to encourage further development. Our code also declares that economic development is a public purpose and authorizes local governments to make grants, loans, guarantees, tax incentives, other financial assistance to private enterprise. The scope of the urban renewal statute provides that incremental property tax revenues may be used to finance construction of public infrastructure to serve all levels of housing as long as a percentage of those revenues is set aside to help meet the housing needs of low and moderate income families. So this document is a, is an urban renewal plan that's included in your packet within the meaning of Chapter 403 of the Code of Iowa, and it sets out the proposed project to be undertaken. So you see in the description of the urban renewal area, there's A through E, or is it A through F? So on the map here, that shows the corresponding legal description to the areas. So the urban renewal area within this plan is a larger area. It includes properties between West Avenue, with Dan Cahill's property on the north, down to Mason Road, with the intention that there is going to be, with future development, some street connections in this area, and going through this process, setting all these properties up, if street connections or development occurs that they could have the opportunity to request a similar type assistance if desired by council. But this is all based on Mason Road sub-area plan that was adopted by the council in 1999 that laid out a street network in the area. We have a lot of dead-end streets, Dill Street, Jim Kelly Drive, Gilbert, being east-west streets. Cambridge Drive is being constructed to the north property line on Sunrise West's property at this time, Sequoia. So there's a lot of streets that need connected to better enable traffic flow and services throughout this area, so that's why the urban renewal area describes all these properties even though we're talking about Mr. Cahill's project at this time. So as primary objectives for the development within the urban renewal area, similar to previous ones, contribute to a well-diversified, well-balanced local economy by creating new residential development opportunities and strengthening the property tax base, allow for a planning and future connection of new public streets within the urban renewal area to existing public streets adjacent to the urban renewal area to meet the housing needs as stated in Des Moines County Housing Needs Assessment by constructing new single-family duplex residential housing, meeting the identified moderate-income housing price point, create a mechanism for financing for the construction of infrastructure, and generate funds that can be used to improve housing for low-to-moderate-income families. So as Mr. Cahill go through his development, previously went through the planning commission and city council as far as preliminary plat. This was a 16-lot preliminary plat with a north-south street connecting to the southern edge of his property that would allow future street connection further to the south. Currently, Mike Moorfield owns the property to the south of that, looking at constructing, again, single-family and possible duplexes on the west side of the development, lots ranging between 10,000 and 27,000 square feet in size, homes approximately 180,000 to 275,000. The developer of the project will install all required public infrastructure and utilities to and through the site, including approximately 870 lineal feet of new roadway, associated sewer, water, and other utilities. So this economic development agreement would be a second phase of this process. This is the first phase, as we went through before, of, I think, three different phases. The payments requested would not exceed 350,000, that's the estimated total cost for the developer, and then with the LMI set aside, the total payments would not exceed 484,400, so 134,400 in LMI set aside. That goes to low-to-moderate-income families in the community, and that would be as specified by the council how those are used. Again, the plat was approved by council on October 2nd, 2017, and then the future establishment of a TIF, Tax Increment District, and a development agreement would be needed as you see on your council agenda, set date for December 2nd, I believe it is. Is consideration of a development agreement with Park West LLC for the West Avenue, Mason Road, urban renewal area. That would specify more of the terms of the agreement.
Good.
If I understand this, Eric, am I correct if we do the TIF, then that means there's no tax abatements for?
Correct.
Any residential houses that are in there?
Yeah, our tax payment policy that was adopted states if TIF is directly used, then tax payment would not be allowed for any homes in that area. Now, we've discussed before, the current tax abatement, we have a 10-year which equates out to about 440% of taxes over a 10-year period, three years, 300% over those three years. I think for TIF, is it around 500 or 600, is it roughly five and a half or six years?
It's a little over five years, yeah.
Yeah, yep. So it's, it is the three years, around three years, the 10 years essentially around four and a half years of tax abatement, and the TIF would be a little over five, five and a half years of tax abatement, so.
Now, that's, saying that, that's the portion that goes to the developer.
Yeah, yep.
You also have collected the portion that comes into the LMI set-aside account.
We did meet with the school districts and out a notice for the plan as well as required, and again, the planning commission did meet and did vote five to one to approve the urban renewal area as well.
Okay, Mr. Cahill?
Handouts.
Thank you, sir.
More handouts. All good teachers. Handouts. I'm not here to ask the city for any money. I should be happy to hear that. Tax increment financing, it really takes a lot of knocks in the newspaper and out in the public for some reason. I don't understand why. I'm a big fan of tax increment financing. There are two types of tax increment financing. Most people don't really realize that, and they've heard rumors about the developers are getting rich and all this. Well, the first type of tax increment financing is where a city goes out and takes out a loan, a bond, for the improvements, and then the improvements are taxed over the years, 10-year period, or whatever you, whatever the city adopts, and pays off that bond. So the city really didn't have any money in there in that type of tax increment, except perhaps their full faith and credit to guarantee that bond, I think Jim told me one day, that the city actually contributes because they, you use their faith, full faith and credit. Anyway, that's the old type of tax increment financing. The Iowa legislature has changed the law now to provide that, you can have developers pay for all of the costs of the infrastructure, streets, sewer, water, underground electric, engineering, reforestation, whatever it takes, but the developer has to pay that 100%. And Park West, that I propose there, is, it's about a $500,000 project, and I think it's gonna be a great benefit to the city of Burlington, Iowa. I really do feel that. Obviously, we can't, we can't TIF the cost of the ground, but I paid about 150,000 for that, and 350,000 is the estimated cost of the improvements. A substantial amount of money. I'm willing to do that. Actually, I wanted to run a street in there and put a cul-de-sac there, and I was advised by the city planning department that they would rather have a through-street there. Well, I went along with that too. It cost me another 30,000 or whatever to do that, but I still think their plan was the best plan. I really do, because Burlington really needs a through-street in that part of town. It's a really fast-developing area, our fastest-developing area, I think, and it's been off, this land has been off the market since the 1940s. And I tried to buy it 40 years ago, as a matter of fact, and was unsuccessful, so when I saw it was coming up for auction, I went over and, I don't know whether I was successful or not, but at least I bought the front 7.94 acres. And I don't understand the negativity surrounding tax increment financing, and I've talked to people about it all the time, and I've talked to the council about it here before. In Burlington, you always heard that, "Well, the council shouldn't be picking winners and losers." I heard that so many times from, especially a former council member. And then I heard, "Well, we can't do a TIF because we don't have a policy on TIFs in Burlington." Well, you know, I really think we do have a policy on TIFs in Burlington. The policy should be whatever is best for the city of Burlington. If it's good for Burlington, let's do it. Other cities are, have had the same problem, and I'll give you some more information a little later. I don't want to take up all afternoon, but even mighty Des Moines now is entering the TIF financing arena more than they did years ago because the western suburbs were eating their lunch as far as development. And I've got a referral to a really great Des Moines Register article in there, but just a little bit about history of TIFs in Burlington. Burlington was really one of the first cities in the state to adopt a residential TIF. Believe it or not, I think we were number two when the state legislature provided that. And so on your outline that I gave you, I wanted to give you a little history of Burlington's experience with TIF, Tax Increment Financing. Burlington's experience has been phenomenal. It has just been phenomenal. In 1993, myself and Mitch Taylor came to the city to annex some property on the south edge of Burlington, right next to the Negrocky property that you're all probably familiar with. And it was brought into the city. You'll see on your outline there, number two, the city included Pheasant Run subdivision in an urban renewal district, just like they had to do today. You have to do that. Number three, the base value at that time of the property was 29,516 dollars. The taxes on that property, Pheasant Run, 400 dollars a year. Now, that, of course, went to the city, the county, the school district, bruselosis, and all those other things you see on your, on your tax bill. Now, we used the old-style TIF district in that time, it's been a long time ago, and so the city took out a TIF bond for 750,000 dollars, as I recall, it's in that range in any event, and that was to pay for the street sewer and water. And the city actually took over the complete development of the infrastructure. The city engineer ran the job, went out and got bids and did all of that, all of that is required. Number five, that TIF bond was paid in full, 895 dollars, 570 dollars and 48 cents, in 2005. So the bond plus all the interest was paid in full in 2005. So it worked, I mean, TIF worked. It paid for the improvements like it was supposed to do. I know there's been a lot of, a lot of cities and organizations that take advantage of TIF. They don't terminate it when they should, and when they're supposed to, they do a 10-year TIF bond, and they let it run for 15, 20 years and use it for swimming pools and sidewalks and every other thing, and that's bad. It denies the school district money they need for their operation, and of course, the county for their operation. So properly used, it's a wonderful tool for cities. That TIF bond was released by the city, ordinance number 3232, I've got a copy of it, on about the 11th year. Number seven, this is my favorite. Fiscal year 2006 taxes began the tax gusher payable to the city, the county, and the school district at all, and the taxes is paid as, were as follows since that time. And I've listed them from you, or for you, and you have those letters that I provided at the last meeting from the county assessor and the county auditor and the county treasurer verifying all of these figures. Through your last-year tax bill, Pheasant Run raised 1,927,000 dollars. That's not bad for one subdivision. Your current tax bill, that you all just received in the mail in August, will raise another 232,000 dollars for this subdivision. I had just put down the taxes that have been paid in the last 10 years that was split by the city, the county, et cetera. When you add in this year's tax bill, it's 2,159,000 dollars that that little subdivision has raised. And what did it cost the city of Burlington? Zero. It was zero. That's why I say tax increment financing, properly done, is a great advantage to the city. Oh, one thing we did in that subdivision, and this came up when we first started this, can the city limit the amount that we would be building houses for? And I argued at that time, I think I had a meeting with Jim and the planning department, and I said, "Can't be done. Can't be done." We tried that in Pheasant Run 20 years ago, and it didn't work. This is a picture of a house out there. It's a split foyer with a two-car garage, sold for 85,000 dollars. That's the first year, this is like the first or second house built out there. And we were trying to limit the house construction cost, 85,000, if you can imagine that. The reason it didn't work is people would come in, "Well, they want granite countertops in the kitchen," or "They wanted this," or "They wanted that," and it was just impossible to do that, really. This little house, it's 1704 Sioux Street, I know who owns it, but I won't mention his name. The taxes on that house now, I looked them up, 3,312 dollars a year. That was on an 85,000 dollar house. And, you know, you just, you just can't do that anymore. But I just thought you might be interested, and you see what happens. Every year, those taxes go up, and this is going on forever. Burlington's here, 100 years from now, that subdivision is still gonna be cranking out 2 million dollars a year in taxes. That's why it's such a good deal. Now, the current request, Park West subdivision, you saw the, you saw the outline there. I really wanted to, I wanted to cul-de-sac, as I've said, but that's okay. This is better, better for the city, and it'll work out probably better for me in the long This subdivision is gonna be planned, 16 lots, some of those, since we changed the zoning to R2, you can have condominiums on those. Land cost, 146,900, plus miscellaneous, as you know, some legal and stuff in there. And the infrastructure cost, 350,000 dollars. Now, where does that money come from? Is the city gonna kick in on that? No, they're not. The developer gets to pay it all. And if you, if I want to do a TIF, this new-style TIF, I accept that responsibility. The money's available, it will be paid, totally by me. Now, here's what's important, and on page two of the outline I gave you, folks. Number one, all development costs, or, I'm sorry, development plan conforms to a 1999 comprehensive city plan. I was shocked when I, when I wanted to do the cul-de-sac and the planning department pulled this document out from somewhere that's been laying around since 1999, I guess, about a street going almost exactly where I planned this street, with the little jog in it and everything. So since 1999, the city has wanted a street through there, or thought that it would be a good idea to have a street through there, but nobody has ever done anything about it. Why, why is that? Well, streets are expensive, as we all know, the city knows that, and it's, if we don't do a TIF, we're not gonna have a street. The land would still be available if the city wanted to buy right-of-way through there and put in a street. That's the second possibility we haven't discussed yet, but it is, you know, it's possible if the city has some kind of a grant they want to use there. So the city hasn't done anything since 1999 in this regard, and it's gotten more important all the time. I don't know who did that 1999 plan, but they could see into the future. Number two, the plan provides a needed possible future street to Mason Road, and that is really important. Could you put that plan right up there again, Eric, please, if you would? There is no place in the city of Burlington that I'm aware of that has this much developable, developable property right in the city, and the only reason it's there is because the people that owned it had it in a trust, and they wouldn't sell one inch of it since 1947. And you can see the city has developed all around it, on the east and on the west and on the south where Mason Road goes, and that left line there, the blue dotted line, is approximately where I would assume a street will go someday, and I hope to, well, maybe I'll talk about it in the future, but you see the bottom part that is owned by the Catholic Church, really a nice piece of property, I might say. It goes right along the edge of their property, and so maybe next year, if I can get Bob Fleming to help me, we'll go talk to the bishop and see if we can get an easement down there, because the street really should go through. Mike Moorfeld is willing, I know he is willing, I've talked to him about it, to get the street down that far. His land, his land would go down to that corner, but then we'd have to talk to the bishop or the pope or somebody, because that's owned by the church, and it was bought, interesting enough, by Tom Daley's bequest, and Tom also gave the city this nice stand here. I would have rather had the bequest than the stand, but.
Hey, Dan, you would want to take the bishop with you if you're gonna go talk to the church, so.
Listen, we have a new bishop in this diocese, and he's really a nice, super-nice guy, and educated guy. He's a lawyer, he was a lawyer and went back, went to the seminary and all that, but anyway. That'd be a good place for the street to run, and that would be a good plan for Bob and I to work on, maybe next year. Now, yes, I said number three, all improvements paid for by me. Number four, affordable workforce housing stressed by the developer, that's me, and a designation by the state will encourage builders to build less-expensive housing. Now, that's important. Workforce housing is, in Iowa law, the legislature, some years ago, passed another one of their ideas about how to help development, workforce housing was one of them. How can we get towns to build inexpensive, or more inexpensive houses to help all these workers we need now? Well, it doesn't help me, workforce housing, honestly, it doesn't, except it would help me sell lots, because it goes to a builder, and workforce housing provides that if the builder sells a house for less than 250,000 dollars, he gets 10% of the cost of that house, of what he put in the house, up to 150, up to 150,000, that'd be 15,000, back from the state as a tax rebate. That's a pretty good deal for a builder. That's probably more than he would make building a house anywhere. In addition to that, the state provides that that builder can get all of the sales taxes that he paid for all of the material that went into that house, that's 6% there. That's gonna interest builders, and that's the target price range that I really want. I honestly don't think we need any more 500,000 and 600,000 dollar houses, they're very nice, but people just can't afford to go there, even with 4% interest rates on a 30-year mortgage, you can't, you know. Okay, number five, increase in real estate taxes to the city of Burlington in the future. The city now receives, you probably won't believe this, 129 dollars and 46 cents a year in taxes on the 7.94 acres that I own there. 129 dollars and 46 cents per year. That's based on a current valuation of 328 dollars, a taxable valuation. Okay, and I've got a letter there, because I think sometimes people think some of these figures I put out aren't quite so. I've got a letter there from Janelle Lundquist, the county treasurer, that's her computation, not mine. So we can go from 129 dollars a year to substantially more than that if we do this TIF. Now, as you'll see, city will receive 39.479% of the estimated complete, completed taxable value of 118,000. That 118,000 isn't my figure, it's the county assessor. City County Assessor Matt Warren did that at the request of the fellow from the newspaper, who I think was, I don't know what he was looking for, but anyway, the 118, that's what the county assessor, I think it's a little bit rich personally, I, it'll be a while before it takes in that much, but assuming the county assessor is correct, that means the city will be taking in, when this thing is completed, 46,574 dollars a year, which is 39.47% of the taxes raised, okay, of the 118,000 taxes raised. Well, that's quite a jump from 129 dollars a year, so it's worth doing. It's something that is favorable to the city. Number six, during the 10-year development period, the city will receive 134,400 dollars. Now, where'd that come from? That's 34, or that's 38.4% of the development cost of 350,000 dollars. State code, and Eric mentioned that a few minutes ago, the state code provides that if I spend 350,000 on infrastructure costs, the city, because it's a TIF district, gets 38.4% of that amount. In Burlington, that would mean 134,000 dollars a year. That's a pretty good deal.
What, are you a lawyer, Cahill?
No money in it, yeah. No money in and 134,000 out over 10 years. Now, if this thing gets done sooner than 10 years, then you'll be back on the tax rolls where you get 39%, you know, like you do in a regular tax bill. Now, there's a caveat in those funds coming back to the city, though. It has to be used for low-income housing, okay? That's fine with me, I think it's a great idea. Burlington needs great help in low-income housing, and I've read in the paper that Charlie Nichols has proposed a plan, which I guess he calls a block grant, where you can go to a city block that's kind of rundown and the people aren't taking care of their property, work something out with them so that the city can contribute and help clean up that block. Great idea. Burlington has so many areas that are just falling apart, and I don't know if you can convince the people to work on it or not, but at least there's gonna be 134,000 dollars available to do that. thirty-four thousand dollars available to do that, if you want to use it for that purpose. I mean, there's a lot of need in low-rent or low-income housing, but the block grant idea really struck me when I read about that in the paper. I think it'd be a great use. Okay. What are other cities doing about TIFs? Is Burlington all alone out here? We got some crazy guy in requesting a TIF? No, that's not so. Fort Madison has a TIF. In fact, Mike Morfeld, the fellow that owns this other ten acres by me there, he has a TIF in Fort Madison. Said Fort Madison went for it big, he built a bunch of houses on it already. They aren't necessarily the workforce, I don't think he went that next step and asked for workforce housing, but he has a real nice subdivision, but he's got another one down there that's super-nice, but it doesn't have a TIF. When I first bought this land, I contacted the cities surrounding Des Moines, all of the little towns, because I keep, I read the Des Moines Register religiously each day, and those cities are growing like weeds out there, as we all know. And in fact, Ankeny is supposedly the fifth fastest-growing town in America. It's amazing, the growth in West Des Moines, it is just incredible. Well, as I said earlier, Des Moines was really taking it in the shorts, as far as that goes, because all the development was going west. Well, they've changed their tune now. West Des Moines is using TIFs aggressively. In fact, they may be overusing it, and they're using the old style where they go out post, get a bond, and I'll talk to you about that in just a minute. Grimes, the fellow responded back from Grimes, Iowa, which is one of the suburbs, they use TIFs, residential TIFs, all the time, and he, but he says, "We don't do the bond kind. We don't wanna put the downside to the city," and I guess on a bond deal, number one, it makes you get closer to your bond limits that you all have, and if the thing goes south, you might have some liability. But he don't, they don't use that in Grimes, therefore. So, what they do is use the type of TIF that I'm talking about here, where the developer pays all the costs. What can go wrong? Okay, next point I wanted to make, and I added a little sheet here to the thing, your handout, the last page, okay? Oh, I was interested, what residential development, where is it occurring? Is it in Burlington, or is it in the county? Or is it in West Burlington? Or is it in Danville or Mediapas? Turns out, if you look at this, these are all the subdivisions that have been done in the last couple of years. I just asked the recorder's office to get that, right? And they did. And except for, you'll see on Burlington, except for Pearson's things, Westbrook Estates there, that was a nice one, of course, Westbrook Estates there, Westbrook Estates there, and Westbrook Estates there, we don't have any, hardly. We get, we have some that got one and two lots. And of course, we have Scott Zizer's, I put that down, it's pending, and that's twenty, that's twenty-five lots, that's nice, and it'll be a beautiful subdivision. Of course, Sunrise West is adding on, that's limited to folks fifty-five or over. Since I'm seventy-six, I could probably get in there if I could afford, if I could get one of those places. But anyway, you will see by looking at that, it's kind of, it's to Burlington's advantage to get busy, and if get busy, I mean, get some lots in here so people can build some houses, not just my idea. I know the Chamber of Commerce has been preaching that gospel for a long time. Yeah, in fact, I cut stuff out of the paper all the time. This is one from December twenty-five, two thousand and sixteen. I don't know why I cut it out, I had no plans of buying this land, but it's tax credit program available for Des Moines County projects. And of course, it quotes in there, Jason Hutchison, about future growth requires housing. And it affects our growth and our ability to attract and retain workers. That's Chamber, your Chamber of Commerce. I also, just, I guess for the heck of it, and educate myself a little bit, on costs of lots, because everybody's been asking me, "What are your lots gonna cost?" I said, "Well, I think thirty-five thousand, probably." Now, it's not too hard to see how much I'm gonna have in those lots, take five hundred thousand dollars and divide it by sixteen, and you'll come out with thirty-one thousand, almost thirty-two thousand dollars per lot. Well, you couldn't do that, you can't do that and make any money at all without a TIF. That's why I say, if I don't have a TIF, I'm not putting in a subdivision. You cannot, you just financially cannot do it. And here's what lots are going for in Des Moines County. This has been a learning experience, really. Thirty-nine, five, thirty-nine, five, here's forty-two, forty-four, forty-four, fifty-nine, sixty-nine, I just asked, seventy thousand, seventy-five thousand. It's amazing. And those are the lots just down the street from me, where they tore that house down there. Those, now they're down to like sixty-nine thousand apiece, where they divided that lot up. I mean, it's a great idea, buy that thing, tear it down. But you have so much money, oh, and this, and they don't have any money in infrastructure. They got a street, they got sewer, they got water, right there, bingo, and they're asking sixty-nine thousand dollars for each lot. Well, maybe they, maybe they won't. Here's a couple of seventy-five thousand dollars, seventy thousand. Here's a nice eighty thousand dollar lot, and it goes on and on that way. It's incredible. There was a hundred thousand dollar one here, but that was, I think, Randy's place down there. But I'm just thinking, well, maybe I oughta reconsider when I'm gonna have to ask for those lots, but I'm still trying to do that. And here's something else, I'm really interested in this, I don't know if the council is aware of Homebase Iowa. Homebase Iowa is another state program. The state does all these programs, and so many people don't follow through with them anyway, but Homebase Iowa is very interesting. If you're a veteran serving, and it was after, you know, nine-one-one, in that period, from then on, from then to now, in active duty, even a month active duty, you can apply for a five thousand dollar grant to help you buy a house. And there's another grant you can get here. Oh, the Iowa Finance Authority also has a twenty-five hundred dollar grant, if you're in the military, and I think some of these apply to police and fire also, I haven't found that yet. I went to Des Moines and talked to the Iowa Finance Authority people about this. That's seventy-five hundred dollars to help them buy a house, if they qualify for that period of time of active duty. It's fantastic, and nobody's doing it. And the state, as another, a little topper for this program, they budget, probably won't be here next year, but they budget two million dollars a year to give these folks another thousand dollars towards this project, if they qualify, to keep them moving and living in Iowa. I mean, that's the idea, I guess that's why they call it, what they do. Homebase Iowa, anyway, that's the, that's it. And then, and then Iowa Finance Authority, I think, does have, also have projects for police and fire, and I'd love to get some police and fire folks out there in my new subdivision, if I get to do it. So, anybody have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I think this is great. The only reason I'm even here tonight is, you're gonna, I was on the schedule for the November twentieth meeting, and I'm gonna be in New York, so I couldn't be here, and I couldn't cancel my tickets, or I would've been here, but, and then on December eighteenth, of course, I'll be here, that's the night you approve it. And the attorney for the city, Mr. Johnston in Des Moines, another bill I get to pay, by the way, in this program, hasn't got the final agreement prepared, which, which, you know, I think, I think we're, I think we're pretty much in agreement with what the planning department wants, but he hasn't got the final thing ready for the city to sign and accept, nor for me to sign and accept. Now, I'll definitely read it when I get a copy. But thank you for listening, I hope it didn't take up too much of your time.
Before we sit in, questions?
I think you've answered about everything that you possibly...
You good?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill. Okay, number six, we have a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending chapter one-twenty-six taxi cabs and vehicles for hire of the Burlington, Iowa Code of Ordinances, and deleting chapter one-twenty-seven vehicles for hire drivers in its entirety. This is gonna be the first reading on this one. Chief, Jim?
Is this basically just get, do away with references to chapter one-twenty-seven as we've modified codes?
Yeah, I almost done away with it, just didn't have that one sentence in the code. I mean, it was, this has kinda already been handled, but there was, it was lacking one sentence, because there's, we're no longer gonna have the authority to set those disqualifiers, those will be set by the state. I mean, we've already discussed it, just somehow it got left out of there, and the attorney recognized that, so that's what that is. Question?
Sounds good to me. You guys good?
Yes.
We'll probably have five more ordinances dealing with taxi cabs in the next year.
Woo!
That's how we do it, all right.
Okay, thank you, chief. Number seven, is a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading on this one, of an ordinance prohibiting the construction of wells within the city limits for use of potable water source. Nick McGregor.
Good evening. This ordinance has not changed since its conversation last week, but just to go over it again, it is an amendment to the potable or potable well ordinance. In it, it has language discussing the non-potable or potable wells. The area on the map on the overhead, there's a known contaminated site that's been monitored. In order to comply with DNR standards, we have to restrict non-potable or potable wells from being constructed in this site. So, if there's any questions, I can answer those.
Any questions?
Not for me.
Can we waive that?
Yes.
You guys good with that?
Absolutely.
I don't see anybody having a problem with it.
No.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Number eight, a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter thirty-one Riverfront Advisory Committee of the Burlington Municipal Code.
This change modifies the composition of the Riverfront Advisory Committee. It reduces the number of members from nine to five. We have one too many, we right now have six. However, one of them has been elected to council, so, effective January one, I would assume that he would likely be the one whose position would, would come off of the group to get down to that five members. It also changes representation from being my position to the park superintendent or designee. That's the person who's been going to these meetings over the last few years, anyway, and has the day-to-day contact with activities down at the Riverfront, anyway. We also added a section for the committee to, or, to make annual report to the city council, summarizing activities. This is, kinda stems out of a request from the council to see about getting this added to all of our different committees over time. We use this opportunity to do that.
You guys good?
Yes.
Another waivable one?
Yes.
I would say yes.
Let's waive it, all right. Number nine, is resolution approving agreement with Burlington Steamboat Days for concessions at the Riverfront properties, known as Burlington Memorial Auditorium, Port of Burlington, and Burlington Depot. Jim, you, who's up?
Sure, so, we've stemming out of, after meeting with representatives to get something in place with the American Music Festival, so good with these acronyms, AMF. One of the things that we needed to get on the backside of that was to get a renewal on our arrangement with Steamboat Days. This is a contract that we've been doing pretty much annually recently, given that we have a three-year arrangement with AMF. They looked at having a three-year arrangement on this for provision of services. It extends their level of service, in the previous contract, they provided alcohol services in the, for the port, this would extend it to the depot and the auditorium as well, for any activities that are, that occur at those two locations. I'll let a representative come up and talk about anything else that would go with this. It also talks about the level of service that we provide in regards to Steamboat Days itself, the event, the two weeks surrounding it for providing setup, tear-down, police protection during the event, has language in it, too, in regards to the carnivals that have been held in the past, although it's not envisioned to be occurring under my understanding for this next year. I'll turn it over to you.
Well, there really aren't a lot of changes to the document. Stephanie Kozlosky, past president of Burlington Steamboat Days. We essentially took the contract from last year, made changes according to the AMF proposal, and then extended the term, like Jim mentioned. Other than that, though, there really weren't a lot of modifications. It's already been sent to the city attorney as well for a final read-through, and we cleaned up the contract a bit. It had been kinda copied and pasted a number of times over the years, so, it's a nice, clean copy for you all. Do you have specific questions?
I do, under the, where it says term of agreement, provided Burlington Steamboat Days has the option in its sole discretion, or at its sole discretion, to terminate the agreement. And so, where's the option for the city to terminate the agreement? Is that the place where it says, "If you goof up, then we can terminate," is that the place?
Correct, at the termination language later on in the contract, there are reasons for that, and that's usually, yeah. This allows us, we, I think originally that had said thirty days, and we extended that to one hundred and twenty.
And I hadn't even realized or paid attention, that had been in the contract previously. The thirty days was not quite the same issue when we had a spot where your alcohol services was for one of the buildings, and we had someone else with a license for the other buildings, and if we had a change, they could modify their arrangement to cover that if we needed to. The hundred and twenty days gives us time, if we needed to find an alternative vendor or get up, set up ourselves to provide alcohol services for the facility, we could get that accomplished.
That makes sense.
Any other questions?
Not I.
Okay, thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys.
Yeah, I don't think that there, the only change outside of the length of the service, I don't, the only change other than getting it to reflect that we have a different vendor for AMF, or with AMF covering the whole area, was increase in the cap for police reimbursement to seventeen thousand, it had been at fourteen-five, or something like that.
Correct.
Fourteen-nine.
And then increase, essentially because it's a three-year term, get a larger cap for changes.
We wanted to make, we wanted to make sure we could cover increases in costs over a three-year timeframe.
Good to go?
All right, thank you.
Number ten, resolution approving the Burlington Depot rental rates. Nick?
Before I use a resolution to establish, I guess, rental rates at the depot, with the Great Room renovation project, in the past, we've never really had the ability to rent out the depot in recent history. In front of you has, it's kind of the auditorium and ports rental rates, and then highlighted in red is the depot, bust, bust, broken down into three different classes for nonprofits, get the classifications layout, but we use the North Bay in the port as the basis on how to establish rental rates at the depot. Because there are no tables and chairs readily available at the facility, it bring, it brings down its value a little bit. And so, the, for instance, the class one for two thousand and eighteen is a hundred and five dollars for daily rental, a hundred and thirty for class two, and a hundred and eighty for class three. But then you also see an increase for fiscal year, or for calendar year nineteen, and then calendar year twenty as well.
We started this table, as far as I can remember, two thousand and thirteen-ish, and we put in place a three-year rate schedule like this for the first time for the other facilities, just so that we had, we have reservations that are done oftentimes a year and a half in advance, so, just making sure that we have a rate schedule that covers not just the next year, but multiple years to, so that we can get those reservations on the board. And as Nick put this in here, these three different facilities are all in the same general area, and we wanted to have a rate structure that was kinda consistent between them.
Correct. I would say that the, that there might be, need some analysis after the first year of rentals, depending on the number of rentals if it gets rented. Because of the floor in there is unique to some of the other facilities, it's, and the use of the building is a little unique as well. Unfortunately, when you rent the place, you can't shut the facility down, because it is a transit hub, so if you rent the facility, you can't just go close the doors. People will still be able to occupy the space of the building. We'll be able to use, like, some sort of a divider, some banisters, I guess is maybe the right word, with some rope types... the right word, with some rope types, but the overall space is not able to be completely, you know, isolated from the public.
Do you have an idea? I assume, let's say the Class 3 rental on the Otter Marina is 1350. Are we covering costs with that number, or are we?
I don't know that I could answer that.
It's been so long since we-
We gotta start somewhere.
It's been so long since we had, have had staff that's been doing the setup and tear-down. I think that's varied from event to event, how well that's done on, on covering it.
I couldn't honestly tell you how many Class 3s have been done at the auditorium in, in recent years. I'd have to go back and take a look and see what Ben Newarkson sure kept track of that, but.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
So, there's an event coming up December 8. Is this the scale you use for that?
Did not use that.
You did not?
It was, it was prior to that. Kinda wanted to use that as a threshold. I think it's at 100 and, $100, which is within line of where we are, a, within $5. It'll be kind of a good idea to see where that's at. They are getting their own liquor license for that event. So, it'll be a, kind of a good test rental.
Any other questions for Nick?
I don't believe so.
Thank you, sir. Good deal.
Thank you.
Number 11, a resolution establishing a two-hour parking limit in the 200 block of Jefferson Street. Nick McGregor?
With the recent project of the expansion of parking in the 200 block, I feel it's best that we need to make the hours of parking similar to the rest of Jefferson Street, because the parking will be very, very similarly coordinated. It is currently a one-hour parking recommendation, and the resolution changes it to two-hour parking.
That makes sense. When will that be open, by the way?
This week. They were power washing it today. So I noticed that they were still working on some of the ballards in front of where the new PD will be, but then that should be about it.
Good. Looks nice.
You guys good?
Good, great.
Right on. Thank you, Nick. Alright, for the proposed consent agenda, number one, a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. You guys good? Number two is a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa and Alliant Energy Incorporated for all-night lighting service on Core Street.
In front of you is a request for a new streetlight installation off of Core Street. As you can see on the overhead projection, the yellow dots are existing LED lights that I've been confirmed from PD that are currently working. The requested is at the red dot. Due to its proximity of the other ones, PD does not believe that there's any more lighting that could improve that situation. And I don't, I do not recommend installation of this streetlight. I feel like the area is fairly well-lit, and we have to, we have to keep costs in consideration here. These things start to roll in, we have to have some sort of parameters on where we would make kind of a judgment call on things, whether or not it makes sense.
And we, yeah, I'll say you, you kind of touched on that, I believe it was you, and maybe somebody else too, that we have to be judicious moving forward. Yeah, it was Jim. Yeah, it was Jim. So, but yeah, absolutely. I wish, it's kinda hard, I wish we had some, some type, some type of parameters written down or something, you know, that would be a better, you know.
I don't know that there's really a great hardened fast. There've been, there've been a couple that, you know, is, the police department has not, has looked at for a variety of reasons. I think that there's some areas that there's been some concerns about pattern of crime, pattern of safety concerns, an issue with where you, where it's pretty obvious that you've got a lighting, lighting concern that's, that's more extreme than others, that it makes it easier. But I don't think there's a great hardened fast that any of them have been able to come up with that, for making evaluation.
Do we still have the, are we still offering the same setup that, because I know we did this with somebody before, that they wanted a light installed, and the neighborhood came together, and they paid for it.
Yeah, I think that any-
The next one that we will discuss, the, the housing subdivision is paying for the installation costs, but I guess what I was considering was the ongoing monthly payment of $9.94.
We, we've got a lot of places where people have individually decided, or-
To pay for the bill.
To go ahead and make an arrangement with Alliant for their own, and, and pay the bill. I think the mayor mentioned, or mayor, former mayor, mentioned that, that their area there had gotten together and paid for, but I think somebody ultimately had to have the, the bill to them, and then they split the cost.
And I believe that cost $12.41 a month.
Yeah, I think our share was like, we, four bucks a month.
So, I just wanna make sure I keep, we keep getting that message out, that if people do want to step up, if it's that important to them, that, that's still, that's still an option.
And I actually, I did speak with Nancy last week, and we discussed the, the requests for all the streetlights coming in.
Nancy who?
Nancy Schnatt from Alliant. She, we had talked about back in, I don't know when it was, 2012 era, they, they went around and looked at all of the lighting in town, and removed a bunch of the, the mid-block lights. And so, I guess from a, seeing the amount that, I mean, if, if you were to approve all the ones up to tonight, that would be 11 in two months. And I just see that, I'm not saying that there isn't lights that need to be installed, but if you continue this on, it could be tens of thousands of dollars in added costs that we, we shed back in, you know, seven years ago, and now we're adding them back on.
Yes, sir.
So I wanna be cautious moving forward on how we look at these. And I'll try and give as much information as, as needed for this, but at some point, I'm gonna have to make a, you know, kind of a, a recommendation from my standpoint.
Well said. Any other questions for Nick?
I have a question. Is there, is there, is, is there any conversations taking place with Alliant? Because a lot of these new lights are the LED, and they provide more lights, because it looks like those lights are pretty well-spaced out evenly. But is there any conversation about replacing those? Cause on, on a property that I manage, I called them and they replaced them all with these new LED lights. It's in their best interest because they're more efficient. Has there been any discussion about that, about maybe going through these neighborhoods and replacing some lights?
When, when we worked with Alliant back in 2012, we started a process having a conversation. They didn't have any program for doing LED lights, and they didn't wanna do it. We became part of, of initial rollout of a different view, though, and I don't know what year that started, but it was a couple of years ago. And as, what they've done is, is they have had lights go out, they have replaced them with LED heads.
Correct.
And as they go out, they're gonna continue to do that, so.
Now, that doesn't save us a tremendous amount of money. They have a separate rate schedule for un-metered lights that are LED versus the non-LED, but it's not a tremendous amount, different cost.
Correct.
But businesses still have the option to do what you did.
Well, yeah. My only point is the LED lights provide a lot more, a lot more illumination.
It's a nice light. It's good and clean.
Well, then this, this item does not belong on a consent agenda.
That would've been my second recommendation, is, is if, if my recommendation is, is no that they should probably both be moved to the-
Unless council thinks it should be.
No, no, we can move out.
Well, let's look at that.
Okay. Remember number two off of consent? Is everybody good?
Yep.
Where'd we get you from again, Nick? What a find. Alright. Number three, you have a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa and Alliant Energy Incorporated for all-night lighting service in the Sunrise West subdivision. Mr. McGregor?
Unfortunately, this is not an aerial, but this is something that Alliant did, and I thought I would borrow it, so I wouldn't have to duplicate the process. There is four streetlights being requested by the Sunrise West subdivision. They are seen in the yellow. It's a little harder to see, but there are current streetlights on the corners. You can see they're little dots there, with little illumination patterns on there. And so these are, these are again, mid-block requests. Sunrise West is a newer subdivision, but I, my biggest issue with this request, if you would show the type of light, is more in line with the style of light that they have out there. They have a 20-foot pole with a, an ornamental, or it's called a colonial-style fixture. And unfortunately, these are, they're too high in the air. They're 20-foot, where they should be more like at 12-foot, and the, the glass is very opaque, and the light is very yellow, so it doesn't give very much illumination. I think if lights were changed to, to clear LED with a little bit more shine, they would likely not need the mid-block. In previous conversation, I didn't know that we had accepted these lights. My staff told me that we had not accepted them because of the, the ornamental factor, and that Alliant wasn't gonna maintain them. After speaking with Alliant, they do maintain these, and we are being billed for the current lights out there. The request comes in where Sunrise West would pay for the installation costs. They're, they have underground electricity, so it would need to go into wherever they have a boring at, and pull that from there. The, the request would be that we would pay for the ongoing monthly bill for these. And because of the style light that they have in that other area, if they were to change those first, I would, I would see maybe the ability to approve something, but until those are upgraded to something a little bit more useful, I guess, I would not recommend installing these.
One thing I've noticed out there, because I live there, is we have a lot of the yellow lights, and we also have some white lights.
And they, they work a lot better, do they? I think so.
Yeah. But how did that happen?
I'm not sure. And this is one of the things that Eric and I have discussed with some of the subdivisions, is that prior to accepting the infrastructure, having a layout on what design standards are for lighting. But yet, these are, these are mid-block requests, so I don't know that we would say that mid-block lights would be within our design standards.
Questions?
Again, we should take that off the consent agenda.
Are you guys good?
Yes.
So what do you think should be done out here, Nick?
I would think that the current, the current lights should probably be replaced with some of the clearer, they have a clearer glass one that are LED. They're a little bit more visible. The subdivision isn't honestly gonna wanna hear this, but they should go with a wooden pole and a, a regular overhead arch, because they do illuminate a lot better than these colonial-style fixtures. But that'll be a conversation that I'll likely have to have with the subdivision people, so I don't wanna make those kind of vast changes for this type of request.
Works for me. You guys good?
It's gotta be a trade-off with them. They're nice people out there.
I heard an important bishop lives out there, too.
Would you be willing to, if, would it be okay, would you, would, if they were wanting the mid-light not to take care of the ones at the intersections, if it was all at their cost, and they had the ongoing maintenance and care, care for it?
Yeah, I wouldn't. It wouldn't bother me.
Okay, handle it. Number four, resolution authorizing internal loan from general fund to tax increment revenue fund. Steph?
Now the exciting finance part. So, this is an annual resolution that we do to recap some of the funds that we spend on attorney fees for doing TIF projects, and TIF, our annual TIF requirement. So, every year, we've been doing 20,000. So this isn't a new resolution, it's just one we do annually. Does anybody have any questions?
We picked, we picked a $20,000 cost, cause we pretty easily hit this level of cost for, for staff time and attorney fees. Doesn't take much work for us to, to get to that.
Yep.
Good?
Good.
Good. Number five, a resolution, a resolution, a resolution obligating funds from the Greater Burlington Partnership TIF rebate, man, I'm having a hard time reading. Rebate Sub-Fund of the City's Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year. That was a tough one. Stephanie?
Yes. So the next three resolutions are all the same, where each year, we need to do this annual appropriation. The county auditor sends me the estimated tax revenue that these properties are gonna generate, and then basically, with the rebates and the development agreements that have already been approved, we pay that amount back. So this first one for Great, Greater Burlington Partnership, they've estimated about $35,000. We round up, just so we don't have to come back to you if the taxes change, something changes. So that's why, this one is 45,000, that we will rebate back to them in this next coming year.
How many more years are left on this one?
Is this the fourth year? Is that right?
Yeah.
I thi, I think it's the fourth year. This is a 10-year arrangement.
Ten years.
Yeah, ten years.
Had to do with the sale of their spec building.
Right.
The next one with Wine Guard had to do with the development of the old Fairway Center.
Yes.
And I, this might be the, this is the, maybe the fourth year on that. If it is the fourth year, it might only be the third year on the partnerships one. And that was a 12-year arrangement with the Wine Guard one, six years at 75%, six years at 50%? Is that right? I'm going off of memory from-
75% is the year.
Yeah, so 75% for six years, and then 50, 50% for six years. And then the final one with the property sale on-
Burlington Crossing.
Burlington Crossing, so it's six year, 100%, six years at 75%. And again, these were all set up annual appropriations. When you do the, an original agreement on an annual appropriation basis, only the one year counts against your debt service, or, or debt limit. If you don't do the annual appropriation, a full rebate, potential rebate amount would count towards it. But we're going-
That's why it's set up the way it is.
Yeah.
So, basically, December 1st, I certify all the, the new TIF debt we have with our, the county auditor. So, that's why you see these annual appropriations come through at this time, because I, by December 1st, I send the resolutions over, and they know then that this amount will be rebated back, so.
Is this the first year for the Burlington Crossings?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yep, they have value now, so.
Alright. Boy, that's so nice to have Burlington Crossing.
I really like the way this is done with the rebate thing, rather than the upfront. You'd never be able to do it if you had to do the upfront thing.
I'm gonna go ahead and read these other two, Steph.
Sure.
Lawyers stand there, and we'll, if they have any. So that's number five. Number six is a resolution obligating funds from the Wine Guard TIF rebate sub-fund of the City's Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year. And that's number six. That's for the Wine Guard TIF. And I'm just gonna read number seven. It's a resolution obligation funds from the Burlington Crossing TIF rebate sub-fund of the City's Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year. So, do you guys have any other questions for Steph?
No.
I don't.
Not.
Stephanie? Where'd we get you from again? Oh, you're a Burlington girl, that's right. Good job, Steph. Next, we have number eight, resolution approving annual financial report. Stephanie Stuker.
So like it states, this is our annual financial report. We, it's due to the state December 1st. Also, it will be published in the paper once you approve it next week. Basically, it's just showing for fiscal year 17, all the revenues and the expenditures by function. We didn't go over budget and any item lines, so that's always a happy, happy day when we tally that, so. Any questions on this? This is, again, just recapping all our finances. We have had our audit, and we're working on the annual, the financial report. That will come out in December, but this is what's due to the state. So it's a form we have to follow, and it's connected with the budget form, too. They all kinda roll in together.
Council?
Thanks, Stephanie.
You good?
One thing, one thing I'd point out, revenues are significantly higher than expenditures for the fiscal year. That does have to do with borrowing for several capital projects that we will be spending down cash balances during the course of this year. The, the main projects that are, that that's the case with the flood wall, we had the funds borrowed in the last fiscal year with the expenditures in this fiscal year. The rehab of the police facility is the same thing. Borrowed last fiscal year, we're spending it this fiscal year. And then, we had three major street projects that we had funds borrowed. For the Roundabout, although most of the expenditures on that were in last- although most of the expenditures on that were in last year. But we also had funds borrowed for Agency Street, both West and East, with the expenditures, the majority of those going to be in the current fiscal year.
Also, that refunding of that bond, that was 7 million, and that was one where we took in the bond proceeds and then, then a month later, paid off the bond, so the expenditures are higher by that much and the revenues, so.
Getting her done. You guys good?
Yes.
Thank you.
Number nine, stay right where you are, Steph.
Yes, last one.
Resolution approving annual urban renewal report.
Another report that the state wants to see by December 1st, so they all roll in together. This is just recapping all our TIF activity from the fiscal year 17. Basically, it lists out all the TIF debt, anything you put in the revenues we get by each district, and then the, the debt we've paid back, and then gets sent to the state legislator so they can compile it all and see all the TIF activity that's going on statewide.
Every city in the state is required by December 1st to do this?
Yes, if they have TIF, TIF debt.
What an overload for them, right? December 1st.
Lots of reports, yeah.
That's the reason why you love your job, isn't it, Steph?
I appreciate it.
And you do it well.
I don't know how the state feels about these reports. I, I think of it, when you do a one-size-fits-all, it is pretty cumbersome and really, I don't know how beneficial it is.
Yeah, I agree.
I think in total, they probably get some information, but to look at this report and really know what's going on? No. It's, it's a confusing report.
Fun, fun. All right.
Thank you, Steph.
Number 10, resolution approving an amendment to the agreement with Veinstra and Kim, Inc. to perform the design of Agency Street widening project. Mr. McGregor?
The resolution in front of you will approve an amendment to the professional services agreement that we have with Veinstra and Kim to do the design work on the east portion of Agency Street. We awarded contract back in May for $170,000. This is an amendment of 35, of not to exceed $35,000, 200, 35, 2, 35,200, to do right-of-way survey work, acquisition planning. I think the whole scope is in there, but ultimately, there's a, there's a lot of right-of-way that we need to acquire in this project. There's a lot of temporary construction easements, especially along the north side, where there are several different parcel owners along that parking lot. And this is the area that I want to get completed because this can really hold back the timing of a project. It's what held back the Roundabout from getting completed the year before. So they have done all the design work. I'd like them to continue working and keep my staff working on other projects, so.
To me, that's the bottom line, because you guys have got other things.
Correct. The, the budget for this is 2.1 million, with, at 205,000 not to exceed. This brings it to about 10% engineering costs. When we would do inspection, it adds another 7% on, 17% of an overall budgeted amount is, is pretty reasonable, so hopefully, hopefully they can get all the right-of-way work done for cheaper than that, so.
While you're standing there, were you going to talk about Agency Street at the end of the meeting?
Yep. I got a bunch of other stuff at the end, I'll-
Thank you, sir. Okay, next, we have a resolution approving energy efficiency plan amendment to the agreement between the city of Burlington, Iowa and Interstate Power and Light Company to provide grant funding for the design and implementation of programs that improve market awareness and adoption of new technologies through the Bright Ideas Grant Program. Piano man.
Jerry Parks, 2729 South Main, and the chairperson of the Renewable Energy Committee. I asked if I could take just a few minutes and bring to current members and future city council members a little update from the committee. We have a really exciting kind of an opportunity coming up here relating to the amendment that's, that's on your agenda. As, as most of you know, Alliant Energy, through their Bright Ideas Grants, has provided the, the majority of the funding for the five electric car charging stations that were put, put in over the last couple of years. These stations are called Level 2 stations. They take anywhere from eight, 10, 12 hours to fully charge a car from zero to 100% charge based on the model and the type of the car. A few months ago, Alliant approached us and they wanted to, they're, they're interested in putting a network of fast charging stations across the state of Iowa. Fast chargers are called Level 3, it's kind of the next level of technology, and a, a fast charger can charge a standard car in 30 to 45 minutes. So it's just a monstrous, huge, huge improvement over the Level 2 chargers. They selected a number of cities to be the initial sites for this network, and Burlington was one selected, and they asked us if we would try and select a site here, and so we met, and the, the one that we all agreed would be the most, you know, the most likely would be our number one attraction in the city, Fun City. And so we've been meeting with Fun, representatives from Fun City, and it looks like everything is coming together for an agreement. So what you have in your packet is an, an addendum to the original agreement that Alliant has with the city of Burlington, and it basically adds two Level 2 chargers at Fun City and one Level 3 DC fast charger. And then it also changes, you know, the first group of chargers, the agreement was that they would be free to the public for five years as part of the, part of the grant agreement. A Level 2 charger uses so much energy, it would put Fun City out of business if it was free. So they, they did change the contract to allow Fun City to charge a fee for people to charge up their cars at the fast charger. At the moment, there are, there's not a single fast DC fast charger, a public charging station, in the state of Iowa. As I said, they're working with a number of cities and others, other cities around the state to kind of get some in. We're in the first group. We don't know if we're going to be the very first, or if this all goes, comes together, we'll at least be in the, the top, you know, the top group, but it's possible we would be the first fast charging station in the state of Iowa.
Tell them we want to be number one, Jerry.
I told them, I told them. We're, we're working really quickly. I got this, this, this thing about a week ago, and man, I just hustled right down to City Hall to get it on the agenda tonight, so. Let's see, what else I can add here? I don't, that's pretty much, pretty much the story. Oh, we, we will be, we have written a, a contract between the city and Fun City, just like we did with the city in Hy-Vee and the city with SCC, and it's basically the same contract. And we didn't know how long they would take to review it. We found out they signed it already, and Friday afternoon, it was done, so we will be bringing that to you for the next city council meeting also, for your review and hopefully approval.
So if they're, if they're-
Pardon?
If they're charging a fee for charging-
Yeah.
On your Level 2s, are they going to also charge a fee for charging on the Level 3?
No, the Level 2s will still be free to the public.
Oh.
And, and the only charge will be if you charge up at a Level 3.
A Level 3, okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah. The, the project is going to be about a total of $60,000. Alliant is providing the bulk of the funding, Fun City is providing some, and our committee is providing some, and we're also looking for other sources, too, because it's going to be a little bit of a stretch for our committee, but so that's, that's kind of the story. Questions?
You're doing it, kid. You're doing it.
Renewable Energy Committee has, how much, how much do you get annually?
Five thousand.
And that comes out of, is that hotel motel? Or local option sales tax? And so we've, we've had a, a sub-fund within local option sales tax. You set that out separate this last year in our, as a separate capital project so that we can keep track of that a little bit easier. We do give them the, the discretion as a committee out of that 5,000 as it builds up to, to do different projects to come out of it. They make a recommendation for how we're going to use those funds. We still have ultimate authority as a city for spent, the expenditure of that money, but you do give them the authority to make recommendations for how to, how that fund should be used. And they've done, they've done, they've been very proactive and done a lot of projects over, over the last few years, both out of that funding source and really on their own, looking at other things to do, too.
I would like to thank that that group does more with less. I'll tell you what, you guys have been on a phenomenal job.
Are you saying you're thinking about giving us more?
No, I didn't say that. I think I'll give you less, but I'll tell you, phenomenal job, tell everybody.
He's setting you up, Jerry.
Thank you very much, thank you.
That is awesome, though, okay. We have a set date for public hearings, consideration of plans and specs for the Flint River Trail, Phase 1, South 8, for December 4th, and consideration of development agreement with Park West LLC for the West Avenue Mason Road open renewal area, that is for December 18th. We have discussion items tonight. Our first presentation, the Fireball Run, CEO is here tonight.
Is that me?
That would be you, Chad Palmer. Class of 87.
Chad Palmer, lives here in Burlington, 13256 Fife Road, just outside of the city limits, unfortunately, Shane. We had a discussion about that, actually.
We talked, yeah, I was going to say, we talked about that. We talked about that, yeah.
Were you wanting a voluntary annexation? You said unfortunately.
No, 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 we're just fine out there, you bet. So the reason I'm here is Shane and I participated in this thing called the Fireball Run, and the kids at Burlington High School, Aldo Leopold Middle School, and now I've lost the-
West Burlington.
West Burlington Schools and the other middle school, I can't remember the-
Edstone.
Edstone, thank you. All helped us in the pursuit of the clues and the missions and that sort of thing, and without their help, we wouldn't have known what we were up to, but Shane and I were lucky enough to participate in this thing, and I put this slideshow together here. The, the missing child is what Shane and I were really doing this for. Number one reason, number two reason was to promote the city of Burlington to the rest of the world. And I don't know if you folks knew, but this Fireball Run, although a lot of people haven't heard of it, has over 4 million viewers in the international audience on Amazon Prime. When I heard that number, I was very surprised, considering I'd never heard of it until prior to the day that Chelsea called and asked if I'd want to participate. But with 4 million viewers, that's an awful big audience for this small town called Burlington, Iowa. We, I put in here, this was the team that we met with out at the high school the other, this was a week ago, I guess, wasn't it, Shane? And we got them all to do what we did every morning with the Fireball Run, where you had to pump your fist and tell them how excited you were, and we got them to go with it. But this is just a review, and I'm not going to go through every slide in detail like I did with the kids, but it's not narcissism here, but because I was taking all the selfies with everybody and Shane was taking selfies with his phone, I didn't get all of his pictures, so I have, most of these have me with somebody else.
It's better that way.
He said I was the pretty one anyway, so I don't know.
That's right.
But there, there's a couple of people here that we met, and I need to go back here, Steph. This guy right here was the director, his name was Phil Tan, and you may have seen him if you were at the audience when they were here in Burlington, but Phil is a very well-known stunt coordinator, stunt director, really important person in the Hollywood scene. And next to him is, was the producer, this was J.J. Sanchez. But Phil, being a stunt guy, Shane and I got to meet him on the very first night, and of course, I'm curious about things that stunt men do, and I always wondered how close they got to each other when they were punching and fighting and stuff. Well, this Phil Tan has fought with Jackie Chan and other famous people that you know, so I decided that him and Shane ought to duke it out and see what happens. So this is a little video, whoops. Can you hit play on that? See if it'll-
I had to put it on him, man. Show him the part where I put it on him, Chad.
I suppose it's not going to, is it not going to play?
Great. Let me, let me tell him what happened.
So Shane starts running his mouth and- It was a-
It was an act.
And he's, and Phil swings at him, it looks just like he hits him, and the video, I wish it would have played, that would have been, uh-
But I was about this far away.
And it was literally four feet away from him, but the angle of the camera and everything, it was perfect, but it was something that we learned on the first day. These were some of the cars, the kids really thought that was cool. So I challenged them, I said, which cars do you think these two license plates belong to? And these are real license plates off the cars, I do 212 and I do 208. It took me a while to figure out what that even meant until you saw the cars that they went on, and it makes sense. That's how fast they go. One was a Lamborghini and the other one was a Vector M12, I don't even know what that thing was, but these, these two cars were considered the exotics, and they always got front row, you know, when we were lining up in each of the cities, because everybody wanted to see these cars. Well, we got to know the drivers of these cars, and after listening to them, I'm glad we were driving the Ford Explorer from Schottenkirk.
And we only did what, 128, Chad?
I don't know how fast we went.
I do, I was watching the-
That, you'll have to watch the series, I guess, to know how fast we went, but these guys have no air conditioning, they had, the windows didn't roll down, and if you remember the old cars, we had to pull the vent to let the cool air come in the car. That's how they got air in these cars. We started in, in Eau Claire. One of the things that Shane and I did, of course, I say Shane and I, but I tasted horseradish straight out of the ground, and I will never do that again. Shane got to sort through horseradish to try to find nuts and bolts and metal parts and places and that sort of thing, and he got a lot of static for this because he only got six out of 10 of those-
You're really going to bring that up right here tonight, huh?
I thought tonight would be a good night to bring that up again, because the cameraman comes outside, and of course, cameraman's job is try to build drama and everything, make it more interesting. He comes out and he says, hey Shane, so I hear that you got six out of 10, how do you feel about that? He said, everybody else got like eight or nine out of 10, and Shane's like, really, dude, you just brought that up? Why is that important? Anyway, we got to see Jack Dempsey's sign, his signature on a registration card up there. There's enough people in this room that remember that name, Jack Dempsey. Shane was pretty excited about that, because he knew who Jack Dempsey was. It wasn't that he fought in Eau Claire, it was that he reft a fight in Saint, in Eau Claire, and that was pretty significant. He got to see the signature, I got to drag race the Ford Explorer from Schottenkirk, and I will say that the fastest it went was 89 miles an hour in the, on the track. Within a quarter mile, I think we went 78, and my response time was 15.72. No, that was my-
That was your time?
That was my time, that was my elapsed time for the race, but yeah, that was a lot of fun. And we met these two guys while we were there, Paul Bunyan and his babe, Blue Ox, and then I, they put me inside this hamster ball first day, and let me tell you, it was hot in there. It was way hot. And they, they put you inside this thing, then they stick the chopback-
Yeah.
-inside of there, and then they blow it up with air, and I was expected to race out to the firemen in town, who had cold beer, by the way, while I'm in this hot thing inside this thing, and-
Did a phenomenal job, by the way.
Went out and back and, and we, we won that race, I guess. That was at Half Moon Beach in Eau Claire. Eau Claire, I must say, was, I was really surprised by the things that you could do in Eau Claire, and I think that was what this was all about, you know, Burlington had what, what we were sharing was the best of our community, all of these other communities we went to were also sharing the best of their community. A little town named Stockholm, Wisconsin, which is right on the shores of Lake Pepin on the Mississippi River, we did, found a couple of things. All through the race, there were missions each day, and then there were clues, and then there were also missions that were not true, and we had to decipher which ones were real and which ones were fake. Well, it was, there's, this one was the first bogus clue that we had, and thankfully, we figured that out. I got to drive the, the steamboat up there with the paddle boat, me and the captain got to chum it up a little bit, and it was an actual, that's what propelled that boat, were the paddle wheels, and I thought that was pretty interesting. We went to Lake City, where one of the worst, the worst maritime-
Accident.
-accidents happened in Lake Pep, on Lake Pepin in that area, where 98 people perished, and it's still one of the worst disasters on the water in the United States. We also got to hold 150-year-old flag, and I was surprised by how well-preserved that flag was, only had 33 stars on it.
And now has only 32.
Somebody may have taken one.
Never catches that, all right.
We got to hold, Shane got to hold the Dr. Mayo's medical, what'd you call that thing?
Medical bag?
Medical bag, I guess. I was thinking like cash or something, but that was pretty cool. We also, you can't hardly see it up there in the upper picture, but John Picard, not the Star Trek John Picard, but John Picard was the first man in history to go into the atmosphere, and he had basically a weather balloon that he did it in, and we got to hold that latex weather balloon. We also gave CPR, we learned how to use an AED. Shane about died while we were doing that.
Chad, you did a phenomenal job, till you carry me that day, my friend.
And we're going to miss this video as well. I love the expression on the face here. And we're gonna miss this video as well. I love the expression on the face here. Did you know that there is an entire job, like a whole career track, for people to play bells? And it's called Carol, Carolinure, Carolinure. And to be a Carolinure, you have to play at least twenty-three bells, where this guy was playing fifty-three. And Shane got to play Mary Had a Little Lamb for the entire city of Rochester, Minnesota.
And I rocked them too. I rocked them. It was awesome.
Meanwhile, we get done with that. It's, it's ninety, ninety-plus degrees. The humidity's insane. And they expect us to get on a bike and run around town and take pictures of all the sculptures in downtown Rochester. If you haven't been down there, that's really cool, too. The, it's really quite extraordinary, their downtown area. They have a lot of public sculpture that they've got there. Shane's on the bike, and I was running around town. So while Shane's leisurely driving the bike around looking for him, I'm meanwhile, running from one end of the town to the next, getting my pictures there. If you could look really close, though, Shane wasn't very so leisurely. He was, that was, I think that was when we finally determined that you were the sweater and I was the shirt.
Yeah, I got dehydrated that day.
We met Culvert Man up in, where was that at? That was in Nodyne, Minnesota, or Dakota, Minnesota, Nodyne. Culvert Sales is where it was at. And it was just kind of a testament to all the silly things that they would find along the route, you know, that we had to do. Boscobel, Wisconsin, is one of our favorite stops. We got to meet the, the police and the local mayor. And Shane got to hold a gun that was used, and it was a replica gun from the Civil War. And it was also used in the movie Glory. Another fun fact there is that we had, the exotic cars were racing and drag racing down the main street of that town. While Shane and I were talking to the police and the sheriff and the local state police guy was there, the trooper was there. And we said, hey, aren't you guys gonna do anything about that? And he goes, it's a parade. We were in Dubuque. We rode the elevator. Did you know that that elevator was... Mr. Davidson, you're a history buff. Did you know that elevator was, was installed by a dentist in town? Because he didn't want to take an, he wanted to go home for lunch. He lived on top of that hill and worked at the bottom of the hill. The only way to get home took him over an hour. So he decided to build this elevator so he could go home, take a nap, and then come back to his practice within an hour. It's now owned by a private, it's a couple that owns it. It's a privately-owned piece now of history. Finland Place Elevator. We wore some goofy stuff and paddled a boat up in Dubuque. Then we went to Dyersville, got to see the Farm Toy Museum. That's really worth the trip. And we got to hold a toy that auctioned off for more than twenty thousand dollars. A little bitty thing up here that baled hay. Stopped in Eau Claire, went to Galesburg. I don't have any pictures of Galesburg. I don't know why. But Galesburg had a great layout for us for lunch. They did a fantastic, fantastic job. Then the, you know, the pinnacle of this was reaching Burlington, Iowa. And Shane and I were just overwhelmed by the response. And I think in all the other Fireballers, there were thirty-four other teams. Everyone commented on how well the community represented. It came out to see us and participated. And I know that there's been some MacGyver awards given away with some of the help that people took and got, helped us with there, but really phenomenal. Burlington just really did a great job. I stole this from one of the videos that they had up there, and I just loved that look on his face. Like, oh, boy, look at this. To get Ripley's Believe It or Not to, to choose us as one of their...
Odd spots.
Odd spots. And to be the first one that they chose was a huge ordeal. And it just speaks to, that's gonna be a legacy that lasts forever, right? It's never gonna go away. And it just speaks to the investment that we made in this Fireball Run. And this experience is gonna pay dividends years after year. One other note on that is that, you know, one of the benefits that we found from the Fireball Run, talking to other participants, is that they now want to come back here to Burlington and spend their money and maybe buy and invest in our community. But they also talked about how the followers of Fireball Run, the viewers, want to follow the trek. So I suspect after next year, there's going to be more visitors coming here just to participate and see the things that the Fireball Run exposed while they were here, so.
What kind of tasks was required for here in Burlington?
You know, I wish we knew. Shane and I didn't, I know Weingard was a participant.
One of them was Weingard's. One of them was something out to Kenny's Roller Ranch. They had to do something out there with the roller.
Yeah, and Chelsea, actually, am I just taking away some of your conversation? Or can you tell?
I present next, so I can touch on that next.
She knows all those answers. Shane and I had to basically bail on anything local. It's funny, because they only gave you so much time. Everything that we were doing, we had to run here, run there, because you only had a certain window of time to do anything. And if you didn't get there in that window of time, you didn't get it. Well, Shane had a lot of responsibilities as a mayor down here to get things set up. So we decided we'll get the Dubuque things done and then just go straight to Burlington. And thankfully, we did, because I don't think we'd have made it otherwise. We were cutting it close as it was. But what an experience. Then we went to Tamwa. I met a radar look-alike. Everybody on my Facebook thought that that was actually radar, but it was not. Gary Burdoff. It was someone that looked a lot like him. We met the mayor there also. We got to do a demolition derby. I did not use the Ford Explorer for that. They gave us some cars, and I literally destroyed that car.
Chad, you were all about it. I'd love to see that on video.
Sac City, we got to see, this is the, this was just in the news, the Tuskegee... No, 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 I'm sorry. That was the, Tamwa, the Tuskegee Airmen. When we were in Sac City, they had some extraordinary artifacts from, these were from the Spanish-American War, Roosevelt's Rough Riders. And people in Sac City donated these things because their family members participated in that. It's just really interesting, the history in Iowa. While we were there, we also got to meet Cookie, the guy who owns Cookie's sauces. They were making us lunch that day. We got to hold, or not to hold, we got to touch the world's largest popcorn ball. And Shane got to actually participate in making a portion of that. That popcorn ball weighed over nine thousand pounds, twelve feet in diameter. And a fun fact, this lady right here is the one that came up with the idea. She was in the position that Chelsea is in now and decided that they needed a tourist attraction in Sac City. I don't know when this was. This was fifteen years ago now. They came up with a twenty-three-hundred-pound popcorn ball. Someone bettered them. They did that two or three times, and finally she just says, let's make a ten-thousand-pound one. And then they did, and now they've had it for quite a long time. But she told me, I asked her, how long does it last? You know, does it get stale? Does it get nasty? And she goes, well, the first one we blew up was seven sticks of dynamite, and it was still gooey on the inside. And it was seven years old. So it holds up, I guess. And Vermillion, I have, I would say that this is probably the highlight of the trip for you, wasn't it, Shane? I mean, this was pretty significant. Anyone who goes to church could maybe understand the significance of this. That is a four-hundred-year-old Bible that Shane is holding there. And Shane, maybe you could even speak to that. I just think it's worth noting. It was such a significant artifact.
It was, they, they had to sneak it out of Europe. It was during the Dark Ages, you know, where it was, it was tough times. And obviously, you see how big that Bible is. For somebody to, to sneak that out of a country, you know how committed they had to be to it and, you know, what was facing them if they had got caught with that. So it was just, it was in great shape. It was just phenomenal that, you know, that that was, that was the hand of God. You know, there was just no way that something like that could have happened, that it would end up in the United States. But all stuff.
The thing I remember about it was that the...
It was...
It was in Czech, Czechoslovakia.
Czechoslovakia.
And the thing I remember about the pages, you know, four hundred years old, you wouldn't think it would have pages that you could turn. But they were, they were almost like leather, weren't they, Shane? They were just...
It was amazing. It was amazing.
Yankton, South Dakota, this was a strange day. So we marked the grave of John Jack McCall. And if you don't know who he was, he was the guy who's famous for killing Wild Bill Hitchcock by shooting him in the back at a card game. Well, he had gone with an unmarked grave, because he was such an, had to do with the nuns who owned the cemetery and the way that he, the law read back then, because of the way he was convicted in that. But he was hung there in, in Yankton, and then they finally marked his grave. And this was interesting. So this was the mayor of Yankton. He's also a, well, a full-time, he's part-time mayor, full-time crop duster. And he took all the Fireballers for a ride. And I think he took Shane on a special ride, because Shane had been ribbing him the whole time. And this might be evidence of what the ride was like. Shane was kissing the ground when he got back. You want to describe that ride real quick?
I think that says it all, my friend.
It was a lot of fun. Meanwhile, Shane's riding in the plane. They got me looking all over town for these cows. And this was when we realized that the more stuff they put into the clues, usually the more bogus the possibility is. Because there were six or seven cows that they said were in this town. There was one cow that used to be in town, and it's not there any longer. But they used that to get everybody going. And it was just...
And they got everybody going too.
It was crazy. We were running all over town trying to find those silly cows. They were all fake. Shane got schooled by these girls at the Sanford Coyote Sports Center, the University of South Dakota, on how to play basketball. Found out he's lost a few skills over the years.
Just a little bit, boss.
Then we were in Gregory, South Dakota. And I'm telling you what, for a town of twelve hundred people, these guys made it look like they were a town of ten thousand people. The spirit there and the community pride was just enormous. And we had a lot of fun there. And we also met, learned a little about, a little bit about Oscar Michaud, who was an African-American filmmaker and had some significance there in town. Passes control, some of the people that we met. Oh, and we met, this brought back old memories of the drive-in theater here in town.
We went, we went one back.
Shane said that we needed one here in town. I would agree. There's just that nostalgia that goes along with a drive-in movie theater. I'm older enough to remember it. And this gentleman right here had been preserving and maintaining that theater. He just bought this piece of equipment, which changed, enabled him to play the digital media that comes out from theaters now. And we made a nice little donation to him. We got to touch the projector and then just participate and meet that fellow. He was so passionate about that. You could smell the popcorn as soon as you walked into the concession stand area. We met Casey Tibbs descendants, and Casey Tibbs was a famous rodeo guy. And he was, got to hold his buckle, hold his boots, and he made this, it was a museum, but he called it the Casey Tibbs South Dakota Rodeo Center. It looked a lot more like a museum to me, but he's very particular about those things. And we learned that this is not pronounced P-Ear, South Dakota. It's pronounced Pier, South Dakota. And we got to meet these guys here who ran the National Guard Museum there. And they had some pretty significant artifacts for us. This was one of the sillier things that we found. It looks like the Eiffel Tower, but it was actually just a radio tower. And we had to take a picture of it. The tricky part was taking a picture of us and its entire, and the entire tower. If you look really close, see those toes right there? That's Shane laying on his back, trying to get the picture.
And yes, those toes are real.
We had to take pictures of things like riding a dinosaur that was at the Sinclair Station there also. We got to watch these dogs in Pier, South Dakota. South Dakota's a great place for, they're really well-known for their pheasant hunting. And that, and right now is like prime time for that in that area. We got to see these dogs go out and root out some birds that were in the grass. They were really good at their job. This was probably the most significant war memorial I had ever seen. It was called the Flaming Mountain, Flaming Fountain Memorial in Pier. And it's just really, really significant. It's worth the trip to Pier by itself. It really was. Rapid City was the last day, and we had quite the color guard. We had an extraordinary turnout. I was impressed by these flowers that were growing there. I've tried to grow them at my place, and they do not look like that. There was a lot of prep work. This was the state Capitol in the background. And what else did we do in South Dakota? Oh, Shane had to find all of these. We had to take pictures of the dinosaurs at Dino, Dino Park. And Shane had to pose like the dinosaur that he was with here. So you see him? Tyrannosaurus Rex. We learned a joke about him. Nick might know that joke. I'll tell you, get Nick to pay attention. Bring his name up. South Dakota. Shane also got to build a weapon here, or not a weapon, but a firearm. Was a participant in, had to make the stock for H&amp;S Precision up there. And we got to meet the presidents. Anybody? George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, George Roosevelt, and Abraham Lincoln. And the kids all got that right first try.
Yeah, they did.
We met the ass from Rapid City. And this was us getting ready to go on the parade. They had a very significant parade there in Rapid City. It was quite the send-off for us. And we just, you know, thank yous are, it's easy to say, but it's sincere when we mean it. I mean, we couldn't have pulled it off without everyone's help from the city, the community. Chelsea's gonna come up and do her bit. Can't thank everyone enough for allowing me to participate as well.
How many miles did you put on that car?
Thirty-four hundred miles by the time we were done. The investment of time when Chelsea called and says, hey, would you be interested in doing this? And I'm like, yeah, okay, I'll do it. Had no idea what I was getting myself into. And I know anyone who's traveled with Shane will appreciate this. But the running joke, while, and it started day one, and you're gonna love this, was where's Shane? The entire time, that was all that I was doing, was saying, where's Shane? People would come up to me, where's Shane? I'm like, you know, I don't know. But every time we would find him, you know what he was doing? He was meeting everyone else in the area, introducing himself, giving them a Visit Burlington armband, telling them all about our community. I mean, every time I was looking for him, that's what he was doing. We couldn't get out of those museums, out of those buildings, without meeting everyone in the room. I'd meet everyone in the building, everyone on the way to the building. We had to meet them. So I just got to where I was like, it doesn't matter how long it takes. This is what he's gonna do. I can't change this guy. But you, I've never met a person so passionate about what he does. And I really appreciated that in Shane, and got to really know him over the week's time. To spend a hundred hours, more than a hundred hours apart with a guy, you get to know him a little bit. And Shane, I got to know Shane quite well and to know his passion for the city. And I think the city's lucky to have him, so. Other than that, I'd answer any questions you guys might have about it.
I don't have any questions, but, you know, it's gonna sound lame now after you just gave me a compliment, but I've already told you this CEO beforehand. What a privilege it was. And it was, it was a tough trip for me. You know, I've got a few ailments and issues. And it was gonna be a tough, I know it was gonna be a tough trip. You did most of the driving and the heavy lifting. Whenever we got to something that was gonna be strenuous, if I questioned it whatsoever, Chad jumped on it right away. Man, you are a great amigo to travel with, and what a blessing it was to have you. I just want to say I appreciate you and Schottenkirch for giving us that vehicle, the hot and the cold and the massage all the way down.
We were spoiled a little bit, that's for sure. Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. The next presentation we have is Convention and Tourism Bureau, Chelsea LaRude. Like, that's not how you say my last name, but I just love saying it like that. Good presentation, CEO.
Yes, my new name is Chelsea LaRude. So not, not a new person in the position, Executive Director, Burlington Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I'm here tonight to do my bi-annual, twice-a-year update to the council on what the CVB's been up to. And obviously, I won't spend the whole night on Fireball Run, but that was a big, a big event for us this year. So just kind of what, obviously, in case you don't remember, we are the cover of the State Travel Guide this year. St. Alley was selected by popular vote last year, this, right about, just about a year ago. So we've been accepting that honor, being spread all across the nation and different countries, be highlighted on the state guide. And they did just give that up to the Manchester Whitewater Park. So we'll have to give up that honor here in just another month. We did complete a remodel at the Port of Burlington Welcome Center. That was about an eighty thousand dollar project that we did. Top two photos are before pictures, and bottom is after. So we had a drastic change at the Welcome Center, very modern feel update. It's been wonderful to have that renovation. And I can't thank the city enough for supporting, moving forward with that as well. If you haven't been down to see it yet, I highly encourage you to come, come see the Welcome Center. We are up to about eleven thousand visitors this year, and I think pretty close to hitting all fifty states again of visitors through the door. In May, we did sign the destination fee contracts with seven of our local hotel properties. So these properties are voluntarily adding a one point six-five percent per room, per night, to guest hotel bills. And these dollars are being put in a separate account within the CVB to help support the operations of the soon-to-come indoor sports complexes and the marketing efforts of those complexes. We have already spent a little bit of those dollars. We sent a representative to attend our first sports trade show and learned lots about the youth sports market and kind of how to recruit some of those tournaments. We're learning that recruiting those tournaments is expensive. And so for us to be successful in it, it was a very good move to start this fund and start collecting those dollars now to try to get ahead of the game a little bit. Not all seven are up and running quite yet, just because every property answers to a different brand, and every brand runs... their system a little bit differently, so we're still working through some of those kinks. And then we'll go back and reapproach the rest of the properties in town to get them on board as well. Of course, Fireball Run, it was a huge day in Greater Burlington, almost two months ago now. I just picked a few of my favorite pictures throughout the day that kind of accumulated everything. Jim, to answer your question, there were a number of missions within town. Wine Guard was a mission location. They got to do four steps of the process throughout the plant packaging and construction of a satellite dish. They got to go to trailways, and half the teams got to get in the bus simulator and drive the bus, like they were learning how to be a bus driver, and the other half had to complete a maintenance chore of some sort, either changing the oil, changing a tire, or changing the brakes on the bus. And I heard Queen of Versailles got sent to go change oil. That'll be interesting. They were at Fun City. They did arcade, go-karts, and the water park while there. Kenny's Roller Ranch, they had to make so many baskets on bank shot. If they missed, then they had to go into the rink and make up their time with the roller derby girls. So that was fun for them. They're at the Welcome Center, and they got to crack open a small G O to see the 750-pound G O that we have down there. Of course, Snake Alley, you can see some of the cars driving down Snake Alley. That one, we ended up not being able to time them, but they still got to have fun with coming down the alley. They did three different missions at the Heritage Center. I know the one that I thought was fun, they had to sing parts of "The Moon" in front of Jeff Rucker, and he scored them that way. And then they did two missions at the Phelps House. One of them, they have a letter from Florence Nightingale up there, so they got to touch and hold that letter as well.
Cool.
Fireball Run truly was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for our community. The video will be in about, in production for about a year now. So next September, we're brainstorming, how do we continue to market that and tout ourselves as a Fireball Run community? How do we throw a big party and kind of get everybody's excitement back up in the release? Of course, Shane and Chad will be included in on those fun things. And it couldn't have been done without the full community support. So we thank everybody that came out and supported the day of the event. We thank you as council for just being supportive and helping spread the positive message of Fireball Run. Shane, or Chad kind of touched on it briefly. You know, every team was assigned a missing child. Burlington, Team Burlington was assigned Erin Posposel from Cedar Rapids. She went missing in 2001. It was an honor for us to be able to host her grandfather here for the morning send-off, and Chad and Shane got to meet him. He's still very actively searching for Erin, and I told him, we're not, we're not stopping. So anytime you can help share Erin's message, just try to bring somebody, bring her back home to her family is great. And it's a rumor true that they found two leads. So two more kids might be coming home soon because of Fireball Run, so it's a, it's a great thing. The other great thing is Community Action Head Start was selected to be our local community charity, so all of the teams donated to Head Start and helped with their programming as well. So it's not all fun. There's some, there's some really good things behind it as well. And of course, Ripley's Believe It or Not. And honestly, Ripley's Believe It or Not would not have happened without our relationship with Fireball Run, so we truly have to thank Jay and the executive producers for helping forge that relationship. Ripley's is getting ready to celebrate their 100th anniversary, so that's how they created this program. They're picking 100 spots all across America, and they'll start doing their big marketing campaign next year, and Snake Alley forever will be stop number one. You know, when somebody starts doing the list, they might skip 34, 38, in the middle, but they'll never skip number one. So, and like Chad said, this is never going away. We have this now for a lifetime here in our community, and it's an honor. And the Ripley's team was amazing to work with, so we're looking forward to continuing that relationship with them and, and building upon what they've brought to our community. So, some of the boring numbers and stuff now, but you are the first to hear the new economic impact numbers from the state of Iowa. I got these at 1:30 this afternoon, so fresh off the west. Remember, these numbers are a year behind, so it is 2016 numbers that we're looking at here, but we had visitor expenditures of over $136 million throughout 2016. Tourism in Des Moines County supported over 1,090 jobs, brought in 7.12 million in state taxes, and over 2.2 million in local taxes. So we continue to push those numbers high. We continue to be ranked 13th out of the 99 counties in the state of Iowa, and hopefully we can see those continue to grow. The state did have a little over $8.2 billion total visitor expenditures in 2016. The CVB had a direct hand in helping support over 46,000 visitors to the community. Those are, whether the event received grant dollars from us, we supported them in helping write the bid proposal to have the event here, welcome bags, things of those natures. These visitors stay an average of about 1.4 days and brought in just shy of 5,000 hotel rooms with over a $6.3 million estimated economic impact. We have mailed out just shy of 4,000 community guides this year, and that hits all 50 states plus Washington DC and 25 different countries. And these guides are mailed by visitors' direct requests. So they either go to our website and ask for more information about us, or they've seen one of our ads somewhere and asked for more information. So hopefully, they've made the jump and booked their trip to come here as well. Like I mentioned, we've had about 11,000 visitors at the Welcome Center. This is the data through April, and our digital community guide has seen over 21,000 page views with the top cities viewing us, being Davenport, Cedar Rapids, a city in Texas, and Crystal Lake, Illinois. So it's just always interesting to see where people are checking us out from. So Jim's probably mentioned to you guys a few times, but unfortunately, hotel occupancy has dropped quite a bit this year. This chart showed data through September. The turquoise line on the far right with every month is 2017 numbers, and year to year, we have dropped about 18 to 20%. So we are seeing that softening from Iowa Fertilizer and all of the other construction projects we've had in the community the last few years. We knew it was coming, we just didn't know to what extent, but it's here. And same with revenue per room, that's down as well. And revenue per room is coming in about $59 per room for year-to-date total. Same with about an 18% decrease. So with that information, looking ahead, you know, the CVB's been seeing these numbers, the hotel industry has been seeing these numbers, and you don't like them. It's a little disheartening after all the, the good that we just had in the year. So 2018 is going to be a strategic year for the CVB. We're looking at this data. We know the youth sports market is very successful for our community, and how can the CVB help continue to bolster that? We have the two indoor complexes coming onboard, so how can the CVB be supportive of those and getting teams here right from the beginning and encouraging them to stay a little bit of time while they're in the community? We're considering possibly hiring a market study, market analysis to be done next year. We know there's all these other complexes around us, so what can we do to market ourselves above these other complexes and kind of learn what our market saturation rate is? With the occupancy drop, the hotel industry has asked us to look into a housing bureau, so to make a centralized location for these teams to book their rooms, to make it easy on them. So we are currently researching that. Cedar Rapids has it in-house, so utilizing my resources in the industry and talking to them, plus there's third-party companies all over the nation that do that as well, and kind of weighing the pros and cons and moving forward. It is interesting that the hotel industry has asked us to look into that though, too, because typically those programs do offer a kickback either to the CVB or the event or the complex that's hosting the event, so things like that. We are also considering more aggressive marketing, maybe a direct sales with attending more trade shows and actively recruiting these events and teams to the area, and working with the event organizers. What can the CVB do? We're not event promoters, so we don't know everything that goes into promoting the event, so learning from these event organizers to see how we can be more help to them and try to increase those occupancy numbers a little bit more. So that's kind of what I got. What questions do you have for me? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chelsea. Next, we have a road to the Flint Ridge Business Park, Jason Hutchison.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeremy.
Good evening. My name is Jason Hutchison. Actually, it's not. My name is Jeremy Hess. I'm with the Greater Burlington Partnership and-
You look better, Jason, than I do.
Appreciate it.
I know he does.
I am with the Greater Burlington Partnership. I am the newest Director of Economic Development, so it's a privilege to be here with the council tonight for the first time. I'm just going to be sharing some information with you that you, we would hope that you would consider and take under consideration. Flint Ridge Business Park has been a very successful partnership between Burlington and the Economic Development Division of Greater Burlington Partnership. And so I'm here tonight to ask the council to consider moving forward with, including a long, long-platted and a long-planned road in its capital improvement plan that you will soon be undertaking. So the picture that you're looking at here, that's a little bit difficult to see, let me go back to the one that's, yeah, that's, let's go right. So you can see where the ball field is, the bottom right corner. That is exactly, that's the proposed road, somewhat superimposed over the, over the land. Essentially, you know, this, this road has been planned and platted. It's on, oh, I'm going to lose my words here. It is on the preliminary plat, there we go, here, there it is. And you show where it dead ends, just right down there by the ball fields. And so if you've been out to the ball fields during a busy tournament or whatever, you know that it's already very, very difficult to get in, get out. But as we move forward, these lots that you see here, 13, 14, 19, 18, that's just about it that we have in the business park itself that we have left to, to market and to develop. We, actually, we have 23 and 24 is already taken there, you see with DuraPlastics. But we're down to the last bit of the land. This is a road that's been planned and platted and thought about, and this is something we just would ask the council, as they move forward into their capital improvement program, to, to, to consider moving forward with, just committing to, to seeing that road be placed in there in the future. So it's, we don't have anything right now. It's not something that has to be done. We're not asking to break ground. We're just asking to make sure that you all consider fulfilling the master plan for the site that has been, has been around for, for a long, long time. We do have some cost estimates that Nick has shared with us and that's available to you. Again, these are things that you need to consider are, you have options as far as the various forms of payment or how to pay for these roads, et cetera. You have RISE grants and so forth, and so those things are available. That's really all I have, is for the, the council to consider, again, moving forward with committing to seeing this through, as it's been on the preliminary plat for years, and, and just consider it in your capital improvement plan. With that, I'd be happy to take questions.
So something that the council can do, or the city can do, we can go after a RISE Opportunity Grant?
RISE Opportunity Grant, right.
Is that, is that the speculative?
There's a speculative, 50%, which is what we would most likely do is on the speculative
on this, 50%. And for them, from an economic development perspective, what it does is it does allow the lots, the two southern of those four lots, to be more marketable and usable. Actually, even the northwest corner lot, due to the traffic flow in that area, makes it more marketable for development, and at the same time enhances the flow of our traffic for the rec, rec blocks itself. What cost estimate do you have on that, Nick? So you've got $750,000 of potential cost in here. Do you have engineering in that? Just, so-
And I would say, $736,000 plus the $87,000 for some of the aesthetic type things. And actually, if you throw that map back up there, I didn't get a chance to tell Jesse this before we worked up this estimate. I wouldn't see the road curve like that. I would see it square off from the first level standpoint, and then future road extension to the south if, if needed.
Yeah.
So that would be a higher cost, just because it's longer length. That would be a quantity adjustment. But $750,000 should get that done, and then you have the extra amount for that. Plus, plus engineering costs would have to be into that, too, and that's at 14%.
So on a project where if you're in 800, 900, I guess 900,000 with engineering, if you do all the alternates, 50% funding through the RISE program. Now, that's something that if the, the city did move forward and put it on our CIP plan and wanted to do it, speaking with Jason, I didn't really necessarily speak as much with Jeremy about this, but my understanding would be that we'd be selective about when we chose to submit a project, looking at what's going on at statewide level, for when it looks like the timeframe that would be the most advantageous to have it considered. In regards to how would we pay for match on this, this is a project based off of what allows it to have done for economic development purposes. I'd look at TIF. In fact, as I talked with Nick about different projects that we could look at for TIF over the next few years, this was one that I told him that was feasible to look at. Another one was potentially, you know, a consideration of around about the intersection and, and West Burlington, and even potentially that right at the entrance to the rec center itself as being another location where it may make sense, just the way the traffic backs up at both of those intersections. A third project that I told him that to look at would be potential, seeing what a cost estimate would be to build a synchronized traffic light system along Highway 61 through town. We have the flexibility to consider those over the next five years. You don't have to do them, but they're all things that are flexible, and we have the potential to do. And I think they're all good usage of TIF funds for development of the community. Did you have anything on it, Nick? It's not something that you have to have any, this isn't something that we need to decision on, but it, to me, it makes sense that if, if you're okay with it, we'd, we'd really like to move, from a staff perspective, it makes sense to move forward as this is one of our CIP projects to develop and put out there for consideration this year.
I don't have any. We good?
Yep.
We good?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Just making sure.
Thank you.
All right. If you tell us, if you tell us you want to make consideration of this, please do. Otherwise, it's something that we'll at least put together and have as part of something that you can look at this cycle.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's agreeable with me, man. Everybody's good?
So I'm getting that that makes sense to consider that as a CIP item? I was just wanting clarification.
All right.
All right.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay. Annual report from our favorite librarian.
All right. Well, thank you. Tonight, I'm here to give the annual report for the library. Come here each year to give you some of the highlights. As you see, we go by a fiscal year for our annual report. So in the print, I give you all those numbers, and then information is all for fiscal year 17. I will, in my presentation, give some updates, as we're several months into fiscal 18 now. I'll mention a few things that have happened since the end of that fiscal year. We do monthly reports, email those out to you, so if you're getting those. We also have our monthly newsletter that we send over. Those are good ways to keep up with what's going on at the library, in addition to this annual report. Those monthly reports are available on our website, so anyone in the community who is interested in seeing those can do that. The newsletters are- The newsletters are available on our website, or you can pick them up at the library, or they get mailed out if you join the Friends of the Library group. So, there's several different ways to keep up with what's happening at the library. Obviously, I think the best way to get an idea of what's happening at the library is to come to the library, so I encourage that, see what's going on, and anyone in the community, I love giving tours of the library, so they can always contact me, give a tour, I'm always happy to come up and talk to people about what's going on. Go into all the highlights from fiscal year 17, I just wanted to acknowledge our library board of trustees. So, these are the board members from fiscal year 17. Two of these board members, Jennifer Cleaver Kirkman and Martin Salino Hug, ended their terms at the end of that fiscal year, so we now also have Matt Chin and Mary Linehan on our board to have them serve with us. We have three members here tonight, so I just want to make sure to point out, Jerry Parks, you all know, he was up here already, but he's our board president, and then we also have Sarah Gott and Becky Godfrey here, so I appreciate their service. And for those that don't know, the library board of trustees is appointed by the council, they're responsible for overseeing my position, the library director position, setting policy, approving expenditures, a lot of things that are very important to the direction of the library, so really appreciate what they do.
You've got a good board.
We do.
Just saying.
We do. So, one of our highlights last fiscal year was the 10th birthday of 10th Street, held a birthday party and celebrated, and whenever you want to celebrate something, bring in Tom Pease, he's full of energy. And so, he was a great leader there that day, led us on songs, and we had people write up some of their little birthday notices about things they liked about the library, so that was a really fun thing to celebrate, really celebrate the place, but also to celebrate all the people in our community that made that possible. Each year, we do a summer reading program, and we had over 1,400 summer readers in this last summer, and so it's very successful, those folks, those kids all get to continue learning through the summer. Wasn't really happy about the fire in the library event, I don't know what she was doing there, but they do different experiments, they bring in animals from Blank Park Zoo, lots of fun things for kids to come and do, plus they keep reading during the summer and keeping up their skills, so that when they go back to school, they're ready to keep learning, which is really what our main goal is with summer reading. We also try to hold a lot of special events throughout the year for families and community members to come together and participate in. So, we had the, coming up again here soon, we have the holiday sing-along, and we had a special visitor come for that. In fiscal year 17, we just had the second one at the end of October, we had over 300 people come to that, painting pumpkins, doing storytimes, decorating cookies, it was just a fun event for families to get to come together and celebrate fall. In fiscal year 17, we had our first clothing swap, this was something modeled after some of the owners that have done this, so people were able to bring in clothes they didn't need anymore, and then we had a day, we opened it up and people could come and take things, they traded, bring things in, take something back with you, and anything that was left that no one took, we took to goodwill, so continued to go on to others that could use that. And last year, we had Harry Potter, which we had people of all ages who enjoyed coming to that. Some of our other events are like our annual Comic-Con that we do, the Sterling Lord Writers and Readers Festival, so there's several things we do throughout the year, there's some family-friendly community events. We also have been making a real point, and so some of the things that we've done is going to the farmer's market, this last year, we were there in May and September, all month for that. We also go to the STEM festival at SCC, participated in City Day in the Park back in fiscal year 17. One that isn't really as visible, but I think is a really important program that's been going on for a dozen years now, is our outreach to preschools. So, certainly our kids in our community who can't make it to the storytimes that we have at the library, and so we make a point of getting out to them, and it's grown thanks to sponsorship from the Murray Foundation, so we visit 32 preschools every month, 32 preschool classes every month, every year, and so all throughout the school year, we go to do that, and then at the end of the school year in May, all those kids get a book to take home with them. So, again, thank you to the Murray Foundation for making that possible. One of our other things that we do in terms of outreach is the Bookmobile, and so it's getting loaded up here.
The Bookmobile is awesome, I love that.
Last week, I think, for an orchestra event, and it was out there, because the school district uses this vehicle throughout the year, but they've left this wrap on it, so that in the summer, we get to use it. Now, this was the first year, so the third year for the Bookmobile, but the first year that we didn't have the school district volunteer driving the vehicle and taking care of all of that. In the past, we provided books, they've taken the vehicle out. This year, we had library staff do that, and I want to thank Public Works for giving us a place to park the vehicle, we went out once a week in three different stops, and then we also went out to Middletown this year as well, so we're going to try to continue to expand that to some of the other communities that we serve. In terms of community partnerships and community events that we participate in, I did put into the little packet that I gave you there, a handout about the community Thanksgiving dinner, that's one that's coming up, the library has been involved with that since the beginning. Lois Blythe, one of our staff members, continues to be on that committee, and if you're interested in volunteering, you can call the library about that. There was a great article in the paper this weekend about their needs, and I know they said that they needed some people to wash dishes, and I just took a call this afternoon from someone who's volunteering to wash dishes, so there's lots of different ways in which people can volunteer to serve that day. We also are this place where you can bring food donations, canned foods for greens and corn, apple juice, and then also cranberry sauce. So, those are things that we participate in. The sheet that I gave you, though, does outline the other things that they're looking for, like you can make fruit pies and jello salads, and you can donate turkeys, so there's several different things that you can do. It's a wonderful, it's a great opportunity for people to have a place to go on Thanksgiving and come together, and they do a wonderful job with this.
And they're doing the turkeys the same way, is that correct?
The turkeys, you go to Hy-Vee and say that you want to donate a turkey, and Hy-Vee takes care of it for you, Hy-Vee on agency, mhm, yeah, so, so we're happy to be a support other partnerships that we have, partnering with the schools, we go every month to the middle schools to talk about books in the classes, we have a staff member, Becky, who will spend a day there, going to the different classes. She also, and some other staff members, go to the after-school program and do projects with them. A couple of us are on the after-school advisory board, we jointly sponsor things with the school, and this last year, we participated in health fairs, literacy nights, so we're always looking for ways in which we can be involved and supportive of what they're doing, and they have brought the after-school program to visit us already. Oops, too fast, there we go. So, again, these are fiscal year 17 numbers, we had over 850 classes for kids. Now, this includes outreach as well, so this includes the times that Becky goes to the schools, and all of those other things that we do, and it's over 25,000 participants knows. This just gives you an idea of how we really strive to provide something for children and families from birth through the teen years, so we start right at the beginning, when a child is born at Great River Medical Center, they receive a book as part of the Babies Need Books Project, and we partner with a few different organizations to make that possible. Books, we have ADK come and wrap the books, so a lot of people get involved in that, and then kids are encouraged, they get literature, the parents do, to bring their babies to Baby Garden, and that's for birth through 24 months. We tried to go down to just two sessions this last time, and we hit world record again, we took demand for it, so we do three sessions a week of Baby Garden, and then the families move on to Wiggle Time, then graduate on to Storytime, and then the 3-2-1 Blast, which is for grades one through three, and then the kids can move right into our tween classes, those are twice a month, and that's for those upper elementary, early middle school grades. Participate in the teen activities, and I'm always really excited about the things that are going on with the teens. Now, this 133 events, that's part of that 852 that I showed you before, that was the overall youth, I just broke out teen here, so you could see how many different things we're doing with the teens in the community.
Didn't they get the, didn't they, the teens get the vending machine there to purchase?
This last year, they've said to us, we really want there to be something at the library, because our coffee shop at that time closed at 2:00, so by the time they got out of school, or they came on the weekends, there wasn't anything, no, they couldn't get something to drink, so they suggested a vending machine, and so Becky looked into that, because she works with this group, and they have a small machine, they get a little check every now and then, that goes towards teen programs, so because it was their idea, we thought it was appropriate that that money go back towards their snacks and other things that supplies for their programs. The other thing that they do to raise funds for teen programs, you see the young man with the flag up there, they go out and put up flags, take them down, with the Optimist Club as part of their project. So, just on Saturday, they did their last flag route of the year, they do 94 flags, they put up with early morning, and 94 they take down at the end of the day, and it raises close to $1,000 a year for the teen programs, so the kids really take it on themselves to do that. Our teen group is called TCOSS, and it is affiliated with the Optimist Club, it's Teens Inspiring Change, Optimism, and Service, so service is part of what they set out to do, besides getting together and having fun. One of the other things this group helped us with this year is the teen area, we had some funds from the Alliant Foundation grant to kind of revitalize that area, and we also got a painting, and they helped us pick out some new furniture, and some other things there to kind of pep that space up. Well, so we went from an upholstered seating area to a metal seating area, which is a whole lot easier to clean, and I think it's going to last us a little longer than the 10 years the other one did, but, so they are really helpful, they're giving ideas is to give us ideas of what they want from us. Oh, they also just recently did Trick or Treat for UNICEF, so they're always doing different kinds of service projects. One of the other changes that are highlights of the year was that we had, we had two people retire in the last year, last fiscal year, both of them retired for over 30 years, so it's a little nerve-wracking, when you lose that much experience, in terms of like, so how is this going to work? And so, as you know, Debbie Wagenbach, who had been our storytime person for years and years, and everyone loved coming to her programs, retired. Well, I think one of the highlights is that we brought on Allison, and Allison has taken on Wiggle Time, so she does that program, but she's also brought in some great new ideas, some new storytime things we offer, so we have a sensory storytime we offered for the first time last fiscal year, and then she just had one again this Saturday, we opened up a little early, so families with children with any kind of sensory issues could come in early, and we have a special storytime for them. She also did a stuffed animal sleepover storytime, so only the stuffed animals slept over at the library, but the kids got to bring their stuffed animals, and then she took pictures of them doing things like looking out the window and getting in trouble with the copier, all sorts of different stuff like that, and they came together the next day and had a storytime snack, and got their animals back. She also came up with the idea of building a tree fort, we have kind of a stylized tree next to our storytime house, and the tree fort has been very popular, kids love to go up there and hang out and read, this was just too cute, when the mom was ramped there with her little girls, I had to ask if I could take her picture, so we get kids who are reading and sitting, and kids are spending time, but, so those are some things that she's brought to us. We also, it was a good chance to reorganize a little bit, so Debbie was a superstar with storytimes, and she did Wiggle Time, and she did storytime, she did 3-2-1 Blast, she did, she did a lot of weekly programs, and so we broke that up and gave some other staff members a chance to experience doing those weekly classes. Oh, and we started a fortnight, and so, and after-hours programs, this is another one of Allison's that she did in the last year, so families got together after hours and built forts to read in throughout the library, if they wanted to. This quote here is from one of the things that people wrote when we had our 10th anniversary, draw to the library. Some other after-hours family events that, besides the stuffed animal sleepover, but the Family Night Unplugged, we had in September, mini golf in the library after hours with the storytime and all of that, and the one that's coming up on December 1st is Birthday Bash, and kids are going to get together, and they'll do storytime, but they're encouraging people to bring items for birthday parties, like the pans and the cake mix and candles and all of that, and those will be given to food pantries, so for families that might have trouble affording to give their child a birthday, they are going to have those things available and donating those, so. And is sending us some things, so it's nice to mix service in with what the kids are doing, even at such a young age. And so, talking about the little kids, and I'm going to talk about more senior community, one of the other things, we had another staff member who retired, and as with that retirement, we moved someone into her position, and we hired a new person to take over doing our home delivery, our home library service, and so really pleased to have Bethany Lutner with us now, she has done a lot with the program in the short time she's been here, there's a little brochure that you have there in the packet that she's put together who can't get to the library. The Altrusa Club helps us out and delivers books to them, and Bethany interviews each of them, and finds out what they like to read, and puts together things for them, and you can see some of the nice comments that we've had about it, most recent, what we just received a couple weeks ago, is the daughter, who is applying, who gets home, we do, we hear that over and over from people who are in that program, that it's just very rewarding for those that get to participate, so we're happy to offer that. So, a few other highlights, the board took on starting a new strategic plan process, we're almost to the end of that process now, so next time I come and talk to you, I'm sure one of the things that's in the strategic plan is to look at ways to remove barriers to access, and by that I mean, just, there are, sometimes there are things that keep people from using the library, so that's part of why we do the Bookmobile, transportation's an issue, we're going to go to them. Our grayhound card started last fiscal year, we're doing more of this all the time, we test this out with kids primarily in the after-school program, one of the barriers for young people to getting a library card is they have to have their parent's signature, so that means their parent has to come with them and be able to do that, and some of this just doesn't work for some families, so we're offering a card that they can get through the school, we go in, and they sign up, they have their signature, they can use all the online tools that we have, we have quite a few things they can use, so especially now that the kids in the Burlington School District have those Chromebooks, they can get on and use those things, so we're just testing that out and doing that program. Another thing is the payment plan, we added that into our policy in the last year, or you have other income restrictions, if they get over a certain amount of fees on their library card, you can't check out anymore, that's the way it's always been, and so what we do is we allow them to go on a system where if they pay 10% each time they check out, they can continue to check out, so it keeps them coming back and using the library, because too often, I, you know, I hear people come up to pay a fine, and they say, well, you know, I have to buy food or electric bill, or, you know, different things like that, and we don't want to be taking money from that, so we want to make it easier for people to be able to continue to use the library, so that's one of the new things that we've done. Through a courier, so to help support that program, we've had for a long time, so anything that you can't find at our library, we can get from other libraries for you. We've added a monthly class for homeschool students, we added an AED unit, so we all learned how to use that too, and thanks to funds from Great River Health- And thanks to funds from Great River Health Systems, we also have the same computers we have, and we open the buildings. They were over 10 years old, and we've got a new system to manage those, too.
All the computers are replaced?
The public computers. Mm-hmm. So that seems to be going much better. We have a lot less downtime.
What happens with the, what do you do with the old?
Well, in this case, the computers were on a thin client system, so they're not like a desktop PC or anything like that. So they aren't something that you can pass on to someone else, you know, to use very easily. Yeah. And they are pretty old, so, yeah. And then just briefly, we, of course, terms of numbers on how many adult classes and programs we have, our meeting rooms, that is our small rooms, the little study rooms, we've seen those filling up every day. It's just amazing how much those are getting used. We also have quite a few volunteers. Some of these are the kids from Great River Christian Schools. You see here in the picture, they come every now and then as a group and do some time with other people. We also have teens who volunteer in the summer. And then we have a teen internship program, so we have a summer internship. We have a teen intern right now, two in the falls, first year we've done a fall internship.
Winter next book sale.
Well, as a matter of fact, it's kind of hard to see on the edge down over there, but we're doing a Black Friday book sale. It would be the 24th, I think that's right. And so, Black Friday, you can come 8:00 till 4:00 and buy books there. So a lot of these volunteers are friends of the library members who work on the book sales or work at Footnotes. They do all of that. And then I always like to include, you know, see these numbers in the... Break down some of the use numbers into a daily figure. I think it's easier to kind of get a feel for what we're doing. So over 1,500 items are checked out or downloaded through the library every day. We were open 307 days last year, and so on average...
1,500 per day?
Mm-hmm. Yep. And to kind of break down how that... A little thing here, our Sterling Lord Writers and Readers Festival is this Friday, so if you'd like to come and learn more about being a writer or meet some of the local authors, we have that program coming up. Not everyone comes to the library to check things out. So our average visitor count is 694 people every day. So people come to ask reference questions, use our computers, log into our Wi-Fi, attend a class, use the meeting rooms, or open a new library account. As I say, we offer on average three library events every day that we're open. Our total collection used in fiscal year was 496,767 for the year, which was up just by about 3,000, so pretty much steady with what it had been. And then I just, I would end, we got an anonymous note left in the teen area, and I just really liked, it was a bit longer than this, but thank you enough for making me feel welcome and safe. And that's something that's really important to us, is making every community member feel welcome at the library. And so if you have any questions about anything that we've been doing in the last year, I'm happy to answer those.
I just want to say I appreciate the fact that you didn't tell everybody that that was me that wrote the note, but I really did.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, good.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Good job, Rhonda. Good job. You guys have been wonderful tonight. It's been a long meeting, but we appreciate those of you that stuck around. We've got our Human Rights Commission Annual Report.
Hello. The report is actually in your packet. I'm going to come up and go up and see if she's the president, vice chair, chairman, whatever we call each other.
Candy, you've been so patient.
And Diselhor is here also.
Hi, I'm Candy Glick. I'm on the Burlington Human Rights Commission, and Stephanie was up on the draw list together. Something that we're going to be reading. The commission is to foster open dialogue and promote education regarding discrimination in the city of Burlington. The public is invited to all of our meetings. They're held at 5:15 the second Wednesday of every other month. We just changed. We used to have it on a monthly basis, but we found it was just better to do it every other month with the amount of time that we spend. Current members are Ann Diselhor, who's right here, Michael T. Alt, Charis, and Linda Robinson. The annual activities that we do, we do participate in the Martin Luther King Celebration. We attend, we sponsor room rental for celebration, so we do get city funds that help us give money back into the community. The Juneteenth Celebration, we do have members attend. We give out Black History books during the events, hand those out. We do take part in the NAACP Freedom Fund Banquet. We have members of, you know, our commission that do attend, and we do sponsor in their program booklet, so we are listed as a sponsor. We do take part in the Optimist Club Red Ribbon Week Trivia Contest. We sponsor that event or partial sponsors of that as well. We do take part also in the P-Plast Festival. I don't know if you're familiar, but that's the Parents, Family, and Friends of Lesbian and Gays in the Community. So that actually is going to be coming up, I think, shortly. Is that the phone festival?
No, next summer.
Next summer? No, I guess not. The Iowa Civil Rights Commission Complaints by Calendar Year, you should have a copy of that. These are things that we tend to discuss in our meetings. 2016, there was 15 complaints that came through for employment, one for public accommodation, so there was a total of 16, which was down considerably over the year before. In 2015, there was a total of 22. In 2014, there were 13. So we're still up a little bit from where we were three years ago, but discussing the different things that go on in the community and what we can do to, you know, help solve problems or just be there for the community sometimes. That's all it takes, is answering a phone call and talking to someone to help them get stuff figured out. So that's what we're there to do. Yep, pretty easy.
Any questions for Candy?
Yes. A lot of people know my name from there, yeah.
Candy wears a lot of hats.
I do.
She's not wearing one tonight, though.
No, not today. See. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for being patient. Thanks for coming down, you as well, Ann. Thank you. We're going to close on now. Mr. Teslin?
I don't know if an email was sent out. Brownfield, Joy, we're looking Thursday, November 30th, if there hasn't been an email. We're looking Thursday, November 30th and seeing if that would work for majority council members and the way it's new members as well. Also wanting to discuss briefly some of the comp plan updates and stuff that meeting as well with the planning commission.
That's it? Okay. Counselor, anything on that?
Well, not officially yet, but I enjoyed it. Thanks.
No comments?
No comments. I think there's a lot of great things going on in Burlington, so it's a pleasure to be involved.
Okay. Counselor? Do you want to say anything?
I'm excited to be here, and thank you for everyone that came out and voted.
All right.
You caught me off guard.
Well, good. That's what I do. Careful. There you go.
No, good. Thank you.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Wow, what a surprise. Bishop, nothing?
Mr. Fennell? Yeah, council members, new council members going to be involved in a couple of meetings this week. We have actually a budget workshop that staff will be going to, and I think Matt Rinker's going to as well on Thursday. Just really an overview of the budget process and some of the factors that will be impacting this year's budget. Matt, he's going to lead that, that's sponsored through the Iowa League of Cities, actually so is a budget workshop. They do four sessions during the course of the year. I think the last session four is at the league's annual conference next September. But this is the first one, and it's really designed to give a backdrop to the primary things you need to know. Budgeting is one of them that they're going to cover. I think they have some basic council roles and responsibilities so that you have just an initial thought process on that, and they do a little bit more advanced in the two sessions after that. But glad to know that folks are going to be involved in the municipal leadership academy is in the evening, 4 to 8, over in Fairfield. So for Matt especially, is going to be spending his complete day doing this, and it's good to see folks trying to get up to speed on their new roles. And I think, Nick, you had something?
I actually tweeted an issue last week with striping should have been done. The contractor's groove machine broke, so you might notice there's some grooves that have been started, so they have to go in there and stripe. But we expect by the end of the week that will be complete. Hopefully, I'll give you kind of a little bit of an announcement as to when that'll actually open up. But you'll still see some construction on the north side of the road, the transfer line to make Roosevelt, the frontage road, and then West Burlington Avenue all connected and coordinated, and then the sidewalk will be continuing from, I think, west to east. It's a little flatter over there, so they can knock out a little bit more. Jefferson Street, they were power washing today, should be open up this week as well. They had some ballers that they had to complete. The big, I think, is currently being worked on by the DOT, starting at Division, working southward. I had no idea that it was happening. I just saw cones out there one day. They are doing some concrete patching. I know they did the outside lanes first. I would assume that they're going to jump to the inside. I haven't had a chance to talk to the DOT today. With the, for the outside lanes, so it should involve some cleanup and some removal of some stuff, and then maybe jump into the inside and switching their traffic control. But hopefully I can get an indication on how long they're going to be doing that, but it has caused some major traffic congestion along Roosevelt, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. I just want to be, you are appreciated in the city of Burlington, Iowa. Also, just want to, I want to thank Mr. Kreitzer. Had a wonderful editorial. I don't know what day it was, but it's just refreshing to see some encouragement coming from your local newspaper, so I just want to encourage him. And also, I just want to let everybody know that our vacation is over. Enjoyed it. But Rob Sussman is back in town now, and so we just have to deal with that. There's nothing else before we close? Nothing else?
Nothing else.
Okay. This means adjourned. Thank you.